Meeting of August thirteenth. Start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. I have a couple. The official ribbon cutting for the new high school is gonna be at eight twenty, ten a.m. There'll be an open house from ten thirty to three, and all are welcome. Also, there will be an open house at the town hall Wednesday, the twenty-second, from five to seven, for the retirement of Chief Scott Freitas after serving thirty-three years of dedicated service to the town of Uxbridge. Any other announcements?
I had got an email today from the People's First Food Pantry, and they have tickets on sale for their annual Italian dinner. They're on sale tonight if you care to run down there from six to eight thirty. And the tickets are ten dollars for adults, eight dollars for seniors and children. The fundraiser will be held Saturday, September eighth, two thousand twelve, at the VFW Post thirteen eighty-five on Douglas Street in Uxbridge, from six to eight thirty p.m.
And I'd like to add an announcement. In January, I had the good fortune to be able to go over to Haiti and a humanitarian group. And we worked with two missions, the mission of hope and the mission of hands and feet. We got a request through the directors that there is a need for peanut butter because it's the only protein that the kids are able to get. It's from infants all the way up to toddlers. So what I'm looking for is if you could donate one bottle of peanut butter, either from a family or individually, and leave it here at the selectman's office or the town clerk's office. Anytime during the next week, I would appreciate it, and it will be shipped over to Haiti very shortly. Any questions, you can call me at my house, (508) 278-5007. Thank you.
I failed to mention that People's First Food Pantry tickets are being sold at the food pantry tonight.
I thought you said that, and you said...
Yeah, I just said People's First, just in case I didn't.
I had one announcement I wanted to pass on from our acting police chief, Lieutenant Emrick. As most of you know, after the bridge was replaced down here at sixteen and one twenty-two, there was a bit of a mishap, but the first train that came through it tore down some cable and some phone lines. A lot of residents called in and were sort of out there, you know, directing traffic and just sort of helping out with the chaos that happened in the immediate aftermath of there. So the lieutenant wanted me to pass along his thanks to the residents who were out there helping with that. Thanks.
I have an announcement. The Uxbridge Cultural Council is currently accepting grant applications for those who would like to apply for the cultural council grants. The applications are due by October fifteenth, two thousand twelve, and the forms are available online at www.masculturalcouncil.org. A couple other things related to that. They're also holding a community input meeting on August twenty-first at twelve fifteen at the Uxbridge Town Hall in this BOS meeting room. Any resident that may have suggestions about what type of events they would like to see brought to Uxbridge are encouraged to attend. As the council, for those who don't know, is a program designed to bring community-based projects in arts, humanities, and sciences to our community. The Uxbridge Cultural Council will also like to announce that a free concert at Riverbend Farms by the band Briefcase Full of Blues, a Blues Brothers cover band, will be performed on Sunday, August twenty-sixth, from three thirty to five thirty p.m. And for any of you out there who may have missed the Uxbridge night photo display last year by Damien Gardett, it will be on display at the Uxbridge Senior Center this Wednesday from August fifteenth with a presentation by the photographer himself between the hours of eleven thirty a.m. and twelve thirty p.m. And a special thank you to Sue Dion of FrameSense and Monet's Table Vintage Flair Gift Shop at one ninety-three Quaker Highway for helping supply the easels for the display.
All right, move to Citizens Forum. Anybody, Citizens Forum? Howard?
Oh, what's Tracy? Vacation.
Vacation.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you know, I am a staunch supporter of the Uxbridge Home Rule Charter and believe it is the roadmap for how our town government should work and should be adhered to. I have noticed on your agenda posted by the town clerk, August the ninth, two thousand and twelve, at one twenty-six p.m., that item thirteen, full-town-meeting-warrant, November the twentieth, two thousand and twelve, will consider warrant articles. As you know, and I know, staff prepares potential articles for the consideration of the board of selectmen for inclusion in the warrant. I call your attention to Uxbridge Home Rule Charter, Article Three, Section Legislative Branch, Section Seven, Initiation of Warrant Articles, Paragraph B, and I quote, "Referral." "Forthwith following the receipt of any petition containing a proposed warrant article, the board of selectmen shall cause a copy of the proposal to be emailed to the chair of the Finance Committee if an email address is on file in the board of selectmen's office and sent by U.S. mail to the chair if he or she does not have an email address. The chair of the Finance Committee shall notify the board of selectmen's office of receipt of the proposed article. In addition, a copy of the proposed article shall be posted on the town bulletin board, and the board of selectmen shall cause such other distribution to be made of each proposal as may be required by bylaw or law. There are no copies of any proposed articles on the town bulletin board now, nor were there any on the town bulletin board Friday afternoon, August the tenth, two thousand and twelve. I respectfully suggest and request that you, the board of selectmen, defer any action on Agenda Item Thirteen under New Business until you are in full compliance with the Uxbridge Home Rule Charter. Thank you."
I just called him. He's thinking it was at seven, so he'll come down.
All right, then, we'll go to... Fire school update.
Mr. Chair, if I could say a few things before... I've asked Dan DeVoe to come up and give us an update. If I could say a few things and a few thanks for some people that worked hard on this project. I don't think it'd be out of order. Is that all right? We're trying to get the occupancy permit, and there were some problems. I'd like to thank Dan DeVoe, School Building Committee Co-Chair, and Ernie Esposito, School Committee Chairman. For the time they've spent that day and for the past week before that and the time they've spent down there working on several things, they've put in more hours than can be expected. And I personally'd like to thank both of them. And we also had some other people that were down there helping, to include the town manager, Sean Hendricks, Nelson Burlingame, the building inspector, the fire chief, Bill Kessler, the facilities director, Mike Legenda, electrical inspector, Jack Gringa. And I'd like to thank Romeo Ethia for all the work he's put into the project. Peter Harper, the plumbing inspector. And Superintendent George Zany, he did not stop till the last day he was on the job. And I'd also like to welcome Superintendent Carney. He jumped in with both feet on his first day. Hopefully, that's a sign that Uxbridge will improve. And I know with everything going on in the new school and Principal Tara Bennett has really pushed for a lot of items, but it's only for the sake of the children in the school. And I've heard good things. The seniors have received their iPads already, and it's gonna filter down. Every day, there's gonna be the juniors, the girls, sophomores, freshmen. And they work long and hard hours to get the occupancy permit. There's a couple of things that went wrong, and we're taking care of. And I have to really thank the town manager for getting in there and getting his hands dirty on that. And also John Higgins, School Building Committee Co-Chair, the acting police chief, Peter Emrick, and Sergeant Timothy Burke for all the support they've given us for security of the site. As far as J.L.A. and Sharmit, before any of them leave, I'd like to thank Bill McNally, the clerk of the works, done a fantastic job on keeping track of all the reports and everything else. David Cravitz, he's done a great job. Raymond Design Group, Gene Raymond, Jeff Yost. They've really worked hard on this project and worked as a team. For Sharmit, I'd like to thank Peter Lam-Hadou, Joshua Hebit, Luke Grady, and Luke Kenbeck. They have worked together with this whole school building committee and everybody else in the construction meetings. And if I had to do it over again and I had a choice of the choices we had, there's no doubt I'd still work with Sharmit. They are a fantastic team to work with, and it's been a pleasure. The BSE Group, as far as the site goes, I'd like to thank Leslie Fanger and Luke McCoy. Luke McCoy and Leslie will be working on the football field and the tennis courts and any site work that has to be done with that and forest conservation. And a special thanks to Representative Kuros for helping us out with a couple of problems we couldn't tackle ourselves. We gave a call to Representative Kuros, and he took care of the problem within a day. And the last person I'd like to really thank is Senator Richard Moore for keeping an eye on the project and keeping together with the MSBA. And hopefully, Senator Moore can help us out some more in the near future. And the reason I asked Dan to come, because I apologize to the board. I've missed a couple of meetings. I've had some personal things go on that I couldn't make it. I now have a fixed schedule, and I don't see myself missing any more meetings. So I'll turn it over to Dan for the update for the school.
Thanks, Bruce. Bruce said it's a team thing. Lot of work by a lot of people, a lot of work. We did receive the certificate of occupancy on the date we're supposed to, July twenty-seventh. Through much hard work by Sharmit. Fire chief was instrumental in helping us. Had issues with the fire alarm system. Had a lightning strike down there, and they had to scramble to get that thing going to get the certificate of occupancy. So there was a big scramble at the end, but we ended up getting it through a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Where we stand now, basically, the project, since that's happened, the COO has been... The school department now actually controls the building itself. They're responsible for the building. Sharmit is not done working inside, so things have to be arranged through the school administration in Sharmit to have communication about what work's gonna take place, where nobody's gonna be, especially students. Students started coming in today to receive their iPads, to get orientation with the building. So students are on-site now at certain times, even though school starts the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth. So that's an ongoing situation that we have to take care of with scheduling. Right now, the site, the road going in is paved. The final paving is down, the top coat's down. The parking lot is all finished, all striped. Staff parking is numbered and lettered for staff. Visitor parking is done. I think what they might have left to do is put signage up, handicap signage and so forth for parking. But basically, all the parking and driveway are pretty much complete. There's a couple of spots out back that we asked the architect to look at to see if we could fill in some areas that we think, instead of having plantings, it would be better served to have asphalt put down in that area. Not large areas, probably, I don't know, three hundred to five hundred square feet, extra asphalt. But we haven't decided on that yet. Inside the building, basically, what we've done is Raymond Design, and they undertook their punch list. They started probably, I wanna say, three or four weeks ago. They did one, and they just completed it last week, I believe. Ernie Esposito and myself created another punch list. And what we did, we figured more set of eyes looking at what has to be corrected or what's unsatisfactory. More set of eyes could see better. And then we compared the list in the end, and we took out the things that we had together, and we left in the things that they missed and we left in the things that Ernie and I might have missed. So the punch list is complete. The process now is the punch list is being worked on, touch-up paint, scratches being fixed, and doors and things like that. So that's an ongoing process, and that continues every day. Actually, in the classroom wing, I checked it out today, and some of the things on my punch list that I looked at to see if they were corrected, they had been corrected. I didn't do the whole punch list, but just to see for my own satisfaction whether they have been working on it, and they have been. So basically, B Wing, which is the classroom wing, the main classroom wing, that's pretty much complete. A lot of teachers have been in there unpacking their stuff and setting up their rooms. The gym, like about a week ago, was filled to the ceiling just about with storage. Everybody, we were using that for our main storage area till we get into the classrooms. That is empty now. Through a lot of hard work by Mike Legenda and a lot of the high school students that they ended up hiring to move that stuff out of there. They did a great job. There were issues that I think everybody's aware of, the main corridor issue that we had with the tile that was... I don't know whether it was the base of the tile that caused the problem, that the tile sits on, or the way it was installed. I don't think anybody really knows. But that was a major, major concern, and it's not a cost to the town. It had to be all replaced, which is, I don't know how many square feet it was, but it was a lot. The main corridor, all the way down into the cafeteria, a lot of square footage there. And the contractor had to pay for that. It was, and it wasn't something, as it was being put in, when the floor is dull and before it's washed and waxed. Because I looked at the floor every single day. I couldn't see anything wrong with it. Couldn't see anything. When they washed and waxed it, as soon as you opened that door, you said, "Oh, what happened? What happened?" Because everybody said the same thing. Nobody noticed it as it was going, when it was being installed, until it was washed and waxed. Because somebody would've said something. Nobody noticed anything. So that is, that replacement of that floor is complete now. All that's left on that floor is to be washed and waxed. And I think it's supposed to be done tomorrow, or Wednesday. I heard tomorrow, but I'm not sure. The other parts of the building is going well. There's a few things left in the basement part where the locker rooms are. Some of the lockers are still being finished at this time. They're close to being finished. Other than that, basically, the usual glitches that you find. It was like, to give you an example, there was a glitch about... They have electric savings devices in all the rooms, everywhere. So when you leave a room and you don't shut off the light switch after five minutes or so, if there's no motion in that room, the lights will die. What was designed into the plan, it also kills the plugs in the room. Because if you have computers in a room, everybody knows the computers are still using electricity, even though they're not being used. There's electricity going in there, so the thought was that if you know that's gonna happen, you can shut down your computer. But if you're working on your computer and you leave the room and you're gone for twenty minutes, you come back, whatever you had on, what you were working on, you're lost. So that was kind of found by accident, so they're going to correct that problem. But there's like little glitches like that that came up. And I don't think there's anything else in the room, just normal punch list stuff. There was damage to a floor in the music room. We believe it was by the people that unloaded the music goods into that room. They started replacing that tile today. And we, I expect them to pay for it, so we'll see where that goes. But that's where we stand on that. We figure it was them that damaged it, and they're held liable. Other than that, inside the building, that should be about it. Outside, they're making great progress on the track and football field area or multi-use field area. They're expecting to lay asphalt next Monday for the track area. And they're expecting to lay the first coat of asphalt for the tennis courts this Friday. If the weather holds like it's been, they should be able to meet that schedule. Today, I witnessed them doing some testing on the soil where the multipurpose field is gonna be set. They wanna make sure that the water drains down through the, and percolates the way it's supposed to. And I watched that test, and it passed easily today. They're very pleased with the drainage. The drainage is very good. So as far as that, as far as looking at the site where the track and that field are going, it's starting to, it's taking its shape, so you can see the layout from above of how that's gonna look. Another thing that we discussed this week was Sharmit asked us, they approached us and said, "Would you be interested in leaving the temporary construction fence permanently?" And we thought with the traffic that we've had down there with ATVs and dirt bikes, it would be wise to do that. So myself and Mike Legenda and Lieutenant Emrick walked the site to see if there's something better that we could do. The construction fence is there, but it's not completely enclosed. The whole site's not completely enclosed with that. There's some very, very difficult parts to get at if we wanna, if we want to try to get it a hundred percent enclosed. So we're in the process of looking at that. Welch, the site contractor, is there responsible, that's part of their deal, to remove that existing fence. So we're trying to work off a deal where they leave the fence. There's no cost to them to take it out. We gain the use of the construction fence forever. And we think it's a deal that can be worked out. Hopefully, that'll be it. And that should be about it. Any questions, anybody has?
I got a couple of comments. I left out the staff and the DP.
I got a, a cou- couple of comments. Uh, I left out the staff at the DPW and Ben Sherman. And also the MSBA visited the site on eighth of August and they were very pleased with everything that's going on there. They were very pleased.
And everybody's welcome on the twentieth for the ribbon cutting, ten o'clock. Then the, then it's open house in the building, uh, up until three o'clock, so. It's open to the town.
Can you explain a little bit more detail the problem with the fire alarm system?
Say that again?
Can you give us a little more detail about the fire alarm system problem?
Yeah, we, there was, that last major thunderstorm that we had.
Yeah.
Uh, must've been, well, it was just right around the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Uh, there was a surge, a surge and it ended up affecting the fire alarm system in the school. So it burnt out some, some components, so now they're, they're putting in surge protectors and, and correcting this.
So they didn't have surge protectors?
Originally, no.
Corrected that?
No.
That's unusual. Is, is the system hardwired to the fire department?
I'm not sure. That's not my, I wouldn't know, Peter.
Do you know?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
They're working on the, uh, nine-one-one phones so that they can, if the nine-one-one calls from a certain room, they'll be able to bring it right to the room. They'll, you know, be able to have the police go right to the room or the fire department go right to the room.
My question is, if the fire alarms go off, does it send a direct signal to the fire department? Like as a call box?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Um, has a decision been made relative to five or six tennis courts?
Six.
It's gonna be six?
Six.
Appreciate you coming in, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Good night.
Night. All right. Thanks, Bruce.
Okay.
Charter review.
Appreciate the call, Sean. I had, and I do want to apologize. I, uh, didn't look closely at the agenda. I thought it was starting at seven o'clock, so my apologies. Reason I'm here is twofold, actually, is to, um, and I, I wanna follow up on some discussion that Sean and I have been having and, and as recent as this afternoon, uh, Pete, uh, Jim and, and I had some conversation. I'm sure the community's wondering, cause I'm getting a lot of, uh, uh, calls from the committee members as to what's going on, where are we? When are we gonna wrap this up? I've gotten calls from, from, I know you, Pete, Tim, you and I have chatted. I know Howard and I have had some correspondence and folks that are particularly paying attention to what's going on have been inquiring, where are we? I just wanna bring the community up to date and let everybody know where I think we are. And then I'll defer to Sean to, um, enlighten the board as to where we are with hopefully some resolution from the AG's office as to what our next step is. Frankly, we started meeting back in, uh, March, March second of two thousand and eleven. So this process has been, um, quite an ongoing process. And unfortunately, when we submitted the timeline of which we had hoped we'd be wrapping this up, we had looked at dates like, um, April first, we had wanted to submit, and we did submit to the, um, uh, town clerk and also to selectmen, uh, uh, final recommendations, which would do April first of this year. We hoped by August first, we'd be scheduling the, um, public hearing, which according to our Mass General Law, uh, sections ten and eleven, uh, we hope to have had our work completed. And then hold the public hearing with recommendations going back finally to the town clerk. And then in the fall town meeting to have our, um, warrant article presented to the community with a thorough discussion as to why our recommendations were made, what we thought would be the re, the, the thing to do. And then hopefully get two-thirds vote on approval and then bring it to the election in May of two thousand and thirteen. Well, unfortunately, I guess, um, the timeline has expired statutorily, of which we had to adhere to. And we've been in contact with the AG's office to, um, give us some consideration as to where are we? And as of this afternoon, early this afternoon, uh, we had had heard back from the AG's office.
Harry, how long ago did you ask the question? How long ago did you ask the question of the AG's office?
I asked the question. We had started asking.
I directed it through Sean.
Oh, just last week? Okay.
Yeah. So I guess as of this afternoon, they hadn't replied back. I had also suggested to Sean, and I know the AG has to make the final determination, but all the correspondence that, um, that I've had is the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is the unit that works closely with the AG's office on implementation and revisions of charters. Um, and I've had tremendous luck with Marilyn Contreras getting back to us in a very timely manner. Not also on conversation, but in very detailed emails, which has been tremendous help for our group. However, um, we haven't approached her, figuring we go right direct to the AG.
I loved your message today.
You did?
I did.
Okay, good. So I guess my main concern as it, um, as it goes to the agenda, and I do appreciate you fitting me in, is I noticed on the agenda the charter review update, but I also noticed going down to item thirteen is the fall town meeting, the warrant for November twentieth. And the closing date at this point, or for your consideration, and I'm sure vote tonight, is gonna be, um, the closing date for receipt of articles is nine-twenty-one. That could be somewhat problematic. Simply because we have to file our recommend, our final report on the recommendations as they relate to the public hearing back to the town clerk. Once they get to her, then we have to format a warrant article that has to be submitted to you folks for voting at the town meeting, be it in the fall. So we're getting really compressed in terms of trying to meet that timeline. Should we not meet that timeline and should we not be able to put an article on the fall town meeting? We're then faced with setting a special town meeting. Frankly, I, I, I'm not excited about that because I think the cost of doing that and the participation we may get in the town meeting, um, I'm a little concerned about. Now, we're also faced with later, if whatever we schedule as a special town meeting, then do we go into the annual town meeting with the, um, or, or do we go to the annual town meeting? Should we miss the fall, then we'll, we'll miss the election and then we'll have to set a special election because there's timelines that we must adhere to on that. I wish it were as easy as cut and dried as, as most folks think it ought to be, but it's simply not. And that's our first go-around and I'm not pointing fingers and saying we made mistakes or you made mistakes or anyone. It's a learning curve and we're all going through it and we're trying to adhere to these timelines, but I'm concerned about the AG frankly, and I say it publicly because she should know. It's our first trip around. I would, uh, hope that she'd be responsive in saying, they've given us enough time. They've been diligent throughout the process. They've given it more. I think Oxford is giving it more time than most, any community I've looked at in terms of opportunity for folks to weigh in with all the department heads, the citizens, the, every meeting we've had, some fifteen or sixteen for input. In addition to every member in the community who've asked to come forward, so I'm concerned about that response getting back to us and knowing the timeline that we have here and trying to meet it, so. I guess the best I can do is, is just hope.
Harry, how far off are we?
If I can jump in here.
And I think Sean can.
So M- M- Mass General Law, with the timelines that Harry talked about, clearly the overriding concern seems to be pub, public notice. The law doesn't want to have, uh, a sort of a charter of any kind, a review or revisions shoved down the public's throat. So the, the important deadlines we're concerned about here is the original filing. So the, the, um, Charter Review Committee filed its revisions with the town clerk's office on April fifth, two thousand and twelve. Once that date started, the clock started ticking, we had, the Board of Selectmen had thirty day, uh, sorry, three months to schedule a public hearing. And then the public hearing, so that would've been May, June, July. So in theory, by July fifth, the board should've scheduled a public hearing. Then four months from filing date is when the hearing must be conducted by. So August fifth was when the hearing should've been, was the date by which the, the hearing should've been conducted. Now, again, without assessing blame, I think it's sort of, uh, growing pains. The, the revisions were timely filed with the clerk and from there, that information, the fact that they were filed, never made it to this board. Now, and again, I'm not about assessing blame and I can't, there, there, there's really no one to blame cause the clerk doesn't necessarily know. It's the clerk's job to inform the board. The committee didn't necessarily know that it might've been good for the committee to not only inform the clerk, but to inform the board as well or th, th, this office. If you wanna point a finger at me, I was aware, aware of the timeline. I suppose at some point in April, I should've been knocking on Harry's door saying, did you file this? Right? So there's, there, there was, um, and because this was the first, first go-around, is there is no sort of procedure in place. So right now, Jay, to sort of answer your question, um, we're sort of, you know, a month behind. The problem is, is that in order for us to get this on the, so, but, but before I get, get there, following the public hearing, then the committee is supposed to make its revisions, file those with the town clerk's office. There's no deadline there except for
Closing date.
For the warrant, correct. The Mass General Law says that, that the, uh, town can consider, or the, you know, that it, it can go on, on the warrant at town meeting, at the first town meeting, no less than six months after the filing date. So we would've been fine. October sixth, October fifth was six months. So you can see that all these dates are trying to make sure that the public has ample opportunity to look at what this committee has done. So while we are in effect behind the eight ball, my argument to the Attorney General is that the public, uh, interest in effect here has been served even greater because the public is actually gonna get sort of a longer time. These revisions have been available. We've had people come in and request them. Uh, we think, I think we posted them on the website. All we need to do is sort of permission to break MGL and to be able to conduct this public hearing at a date later than four months from the filing date. That's, that's the crux of the issue with the Attorney General. And my argument is that the public interest is being served. If we conduct it in five months, that's given the public in theory an extra month.
Right.
Even longer to evaluate whatever the committee has done. So if I have to, and I will, tomorrow, Wednesday, I will, I'll drive, I'll, I'll go to the Attorney, Attorney General's office in Worcester personally. And see if I can rattle some KKKs there. The, the thing we need to do here is, uh, get approval if we can. If the AG says it's a no-go, that's, that becomes our problem. Now, um, now we have to schedule a special town meeting so that we can get the question, uh, so that, so that the question can be approved by the town in order to have an election.
Now, in the past.
Have a ballot in May.
To do, we've done specials within a normal, which I think compresses the amount of time you need, but it's still not gonna be.
It isn't.
See, that's the problem. That's the problem. If.
If the four months.
If we don't meet the deadline.
If we.
We have to restart again.
Four months. We'd have to technically start over.
From today, from today or whatever.
Actually, just in case, once we found this out and it was July twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, I had
Refilled anyways.
The committee refiled, so we do have a new refiling date. But in the meantime, I'm trying to see what I can do. Again, I think we have a strong argument based on the public interest being served. So unfortunately, vacations, I don't know what it is. The Attorney General's office has, has not been responsive, which has not been my experience. Generally, that office gets back to us, um, quite quickly, at least via email.
So right now, if we don't change any, if there's no concession made by the AG, we'd be looking to put this for inclusion. Uh, sup, suppose we didn't do a special, but it would be included in April and then voted on next fall. Is that, that's the worst-case scenario? Is that where we're at?
No, we could vote on it in, oh, worst case, without doing a special?
Uh, then we'd have to wait a whole year for an election.
No, if we did a special, we would just have to have a special at least six months after the July twenty-seventh filing date. So say January. At that point in time, we could put it on the mid.
But the other key date is we need the ballot election to occur.
Which could still happen in May.
Which, which is gonna have to occur in May.
Ninety days.
That's gonna happen ninety days.
Election can't occur ninety day, yeah.
After the town meeting. But one of the things that we, we have to do as well, just like we did with the original charter, we have to mail the proposed amendment, which in fact, the amendment is essentially the charter.
Right.
The revised charter, if you will, or the proposed recommendations within. A copy of this has to go to each household in the town. That's approximately six thousand households. Now, that has to be done two weeks before the election. At least two weeks. It can be done prior, but at least so people can have a chance to pour through it and take a look at it before they ultimately go to vote. Another issue there is printing costs, mailing costs. I've had some discussion with Sean, some with Kelly on that, but, and I know we're on a very tight budget and I, I don't know if this has been appropriated.
Yeah.
Or monies have been encumbered for that particular purpose, but it's something else that has to be thought about. And we talked about hopefully chatting with Blackstone Valley Tech and Dr. Fitzpatrick and finding out if he could help us out to help to phrase some of these costs, but we haven't done that, so.
What's the estimate on the cost? Do you have a cost estimate right now?
Six.
Six thousand dollars to mail it out?
We looked at five, it could be five, could be, it depends on wha, what the mailing rate is the town has and ultimately what the printing costs are gonna be, so.
We also, I'm sorry, we also have to sort of figure, if we can mail just the revisions as opposed to the entire charter, if we're allowed legally to do, do, do that, um, that would keep the cost down significantly.
Just the revisions on their own has no meaning because what do you compare it to? You got this thing in the mail.
But you could, but you could say then you could come into the town hall and pick up a copy of the full thing.
That's putting a big burden on you.
For those people who.
Have an interest.
Who care.
Who care.
Let me make a couple of comments. Harry, your concern about, you know, if we put this on the fall meeting and so forth, um, do we have time? And if it's a special, there's a cost and how many people will attend? Well, there's another side of that. To put something like this on a regular annual meeting, fall or spring, with all the other things we have to do, I guarantee you, there'll be no consideration of the charter itself because there's just too much stuff to go through. I followed your proceedings somewhat. I went to two or three, maybe four of your meetings and I made various comments. So I was, you know, kind of in tune with this. But I did not know that it was filed with the town clerk. In fact, I called you and said, you know, is there a copy of what your document is?
Right.
But I didn't do that until several months after you have, had finished. I also remind you that one of the selling points of a charter way back when, the statement was made, well, it's a lot easier to change a charter than it is to change a bylaw, which of course is absolutely wrong. So there are, and there are a lot of changes in here. I've gone through this since I got a copy of it and I took the old one and the new one. I'm going through it and I tell you, it's, it's hard unless you really put on every page what, what's the italicize means and what the bold print means and, and so forth. But I wanna call your attention, you, you all have a copy of this. Go to page three. It's not the third page in, cause we have five.
Numbered, numbered three.
Number, yeah, for it. Section three, Finance Committee. The first sentence says, "There shall be a finance committee of seven members, of which four members shall be appointed by the moderator and three members shall be elected by the voters." Then there are two lines about this suggested change. I'm gonna forget about that for a second. Go to the third sentence. "The number of members, the term of office and any other conditions of appointment or service as may be deemed necessary or desirable shall be established by bylaw." So you see, the charter actually contradicts itself. And this isn't the original one. I mean, this has been there for ten years. You, you understand what I'm trying to get across? You cannot do this stuff on the fly. And some of the changes that are proposed to be made have very far-reaching consequences. For instance, they propose changes that the Board of Selectmen are no longer to be the chief executive officers of the town. We're going to be the chief policymakers. But what does that mean? And we can issue policy directives to those agencies serving under the Board of Selectmen. Well, what are the agencies serving under us? Uh, the Cable Committee? I don't know, what else?
Culture. Culture.
Culture, well, make the appointments. I don't know if they serve under us, we make the appointment, but beyond that. You see? Uh, there's a lot here, gentlemen, and I know you don't wanna think about it, but we need to think about it. I would not be afraid of having a special town meeting. It's gonna be costly, yes, but it's something that comes with the territory. At least then, you may not have as many people, but hopefully you'll have people who have a real interest in the meat of the issue. Rather than, let's get voting on it so I can get to the article that I'm interested in and then go home, which is what you're going to have otherwise, I guarantee it.
It's a fair point.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Pete.
Ja- uh, Harry, are you going to, are we still gonna have
Yeah.
The, um, first pages that refer back to the original members? I mean, does, it's confusing, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
Is that a requirement?
If, on each page, you see, we put on the top, and, and I don't know if you're referring to that, you probably are, italicized words, our current charter wording, proposed to be removed, underlined words, or proposed additions to the charter.
Harry, this is the first time I've seen that.
Yeah, and, and let me point out
I'm sure it was there, but it's the first time I've seen it.
And let me point it out, because Sean and I had some discussion about either putting one page in with all the proposed changes. And then I met with a few members of the committee, and we discussed it, and said, okay, what do you think we ought to do? We arrived on just each page, so everyone can see what the old language is, still there, and what the proposed changes recommended are. Now, one of the concerns that I have, and I've had this conversation with our town clerk, and also Sean, is that although this isn't a finalized document, and I've sent people, including yourself, Howard, a few others that have asked me, where can I get this? It's available at the town clerk's office. We submitted a digital copy, all ready to be printed out. And Kelly said, well, I'm not gonna release that, because it isn't a finished document, so therefore it's not public record.
What does release mean?
Well, that's what I said to her, I said, well, if we're gonna have a
Online?
Yeah, I said
On the town website, so what's the
That's been taken care of, that, that, that problem has been taken care of. That was her initial perspective, we had some conver- once, whatever, I had some conversation with her about it. That's been resolved.
Okay.
It's a public document, it is, it is available at, at the town clerk's office. Now, because it isn't the actual
Right.
Official copy that everyone will be supplied with next year, if you want to have the, uh, town clerk make copies for you, you will be charged.
Yeah.
Cause it's a public records request, just like anything else. Alright, so you are not entitled as a resident to a free copy per se of this particular doc- document.
It, it
But it is opened
But it is free.
Does it say draft or something on it?
I'm sorry?
Does it say draft?
No, it does not.
People who know what they're looking at?
It doesn't.
Doesn't?
No disclaimer on it, saying, uh, no disclaimer saying that it's a non-official document at this time, or is
No, all we did was put the asterisk on every page indicating that the italicized words were the current wording, and the new words are all underlined for the proposed changes. Matter of fact, I'd encourage people to go in and get a copy of this. We had very little, very little participation at our public hearings. We met for over a year and a half, encouraging all boards, committees, citizens to come forth. And my hope is that the more people that can get their arms around this, read it, come in, come into town meeting, come into the public hearing with questions, observations, concerns. We're only making recommendations. And I think one thing that has to be said, and the community needs to understand this, is that we're only a committee to review and make recommendations. There are still a fair amount of folks in the community think that, does this mean that we can get rid of the charter, if you will? No. First of all, we're not a commission, and to do such that i- is a next level, which means voting in a charter commission like when the initial charter was incorporated and accepted and voted on. That was a commission that had to do that. Our job is strictly to review it, have an open mind, listen to folks, and all these recommendations in this charter did not have unanimous approval from all committee members. I wanna make that clear. We disagreed in a lot of sections, but we voted on the majority. There were eight of us there, most times. We Skyped in two from Florida that were away, we Skyped them in to have their conversation. And whatever the majority voted on, at the end, that was what the recommendation, I thought that was the fair way to do it. No one overpowered anybody, it was by majority vote that the recommendations found this
Is the intention bringing this through to the town meeting and to ultimately a ballot, in all or nothing approach for the changes? Or is the intention to go in with, you know, section two, wa- each one have its own separate approval?
That's, that's a very good question, because we, we talked about that. You can do it numerous ways. You could break it out, and you could have multiple warrant articles, multiple votes. We agreed, and we thought it made sense, to have one vote, to accept the charter recommendations as proposed through the entire. We, we felt that that was the better way of doing it. It didn't pit folks against folks, departments against departments, well, I like this, I don't like that, if you don't support this, I'm not gonna support that. The charter was one document. The review process was conducted by a committee who saw fit to say, okay, this is what we would propose in the entire. So, I think we've landed on, there'll be one amendment, there'll be one warrant article, shall the town of Uxbridge vote to accept the proposed charter amendment as ba-ba-ba-ba-bum? And that seems to be where we're going. Unless, there's several wacks for folks to get at this. And I think folks need to know, this is a learning process, and I wanna at least let them know. There's the public hearing for them to weigh in on. We would hope that folks come, whether they're employees, departments, whomever they may be. Then there is that opportunity to come into town meeting, which needs a two-thirds vote to pass the proposed amendment. They have the opportunity to listen and vote against it there. They also have another opportunity before it even goes to the ballot. They, two hundred voters can get together, and they can come in with a petition. And they could say, we don't want this thing to go to ballot. We know it passed town meeting, we don't want it, and we're gonna stop it. Okay, that's a possibility. Or they could all get together and campaign against it prior to the election, if they feel that strongly about it. There are multiple opportunities, and I think that's why this process is as lengthy as it is. Because once it's done, and the AG approves it, it's like the constitution to the community. And we all know what we're, we're up against with it, and how we've wrestled with it for the last dozen years, so.
Harry, is it possible Is it possible to make amendments to the charter on the floor of town meeting? I would strongly advise against it, but I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I, I don't have the answer to that, Pete. And I, like you, would hopefully strongly, uh, go against that, because then it becomes patchwork through the whole process.
Yeah.
And it defeats the purpose of trying to get the entire document right, and allows for special interests to come in, and all of a sudden tear a section out of it that may be best for the entire, but a small group doesn't see it that way.
Well, it's also possible to make it better. However, it's still, I don't like that process, because it's, you don't have adequate consideration.
I guess it would come down to, how does the moderator see it too? And I guess the moderator
Well, I'm not asked, my question is not the moderator, my question is, is it allowed by law? That was my question.
That's a good question for the AG's office, and I can certainly get the answer to that.
Yeah.
And, and I will get the answer to that, but that, that has not come up, so, I don't, I, I can't say I know the answer, Pete.
Yeah, on page twenty-one on the agendas, you get, uh, at least twenty-four hours, and that's gonna be deleted and changed to forty-eight hours. If you do use the twenty-four hours, if you have an emergency meeting.
I guess you can always declare an emergency.
And, and it still requires the twenty-four hours.
Right.
But the st- forty-eight is the standard for, uh, scheduled meeting.
Right, right.
It's MGL, right?
Yeah, I think you, you guys have always got the, uh, the power to call for the emergency and, and
I understand that, but it, it looked like the twenty-four was just being thrown out. It's still available for the emergency.
Right, mhm.
Also, on, uh, Article eight, everything is italicized, does that mean that it's gonna be thrown out?
Yeah, actually, the transitional provisions, we've already transitioned through.
Yeah.
The transition was the first ten, theoretically, the first ten years. Because that was, we set the ten-year review mark. So theoretically, from the beginning of the charter, ten years forward, we were technically transitioning through this whole process. And we found even with the, uh, committee assignments, like, the, um, the library trustees, the council on agent, when the decision was made by council, or even the AG's office to allow that to happen, reducing it from eleven to seven, uh, it was under transitional provision, which when it went to town meeting, town vote then prevailed to say we were transitioning, and the town had spoken, therefore, it was a lock. We don't see a need to keep it, because hopefully we've, uh, we've made our transition, I hope.
One of the issues that came up with the charter that we didn't have before, with, when we had bylaws, if you have a question, you look at the bylaws, you also look at state law. Now, when something comes up, you look at the bylaws, or you should look at the bylaws, state laws, and charter. The problem is that most people forget about looking at the bylaws, including the Board of Selectmen. And that causes a problem, because they, they cover different aspects many time of, of the same subject matter.
Just as a general statement, I, I think I share the concerns that Peter brings up in regards to the attention that it needs, given that we're in a ten-year cycle after this, uh, special town meeting, I know there's a cost associated with it, but mixing it in with the bigger meeting probably doesn't give it the justice and the focus that it, it would need, considering that this is locked down for the next ten years post this decision. And I also, I guess, would share the concern on the, on the process of, you know, and I don't know if it's the right answer, but throwing the, the baby out with the bathwater, if there's one or two things within that whole work of recommendation that the committee has majorly voted on. Because, you know, people may disagree with one or two things, you're gonna throw out a year and a half, two years' worth of work, which, you know, ninety-nine percent of the, those changes could have been valid and in effect, but there's one or two things that the committee, through no fault their own, may have missed, or didn't think through in, in the same, same respects when it comes down to the people voting for it.
And I understand that, Jay, and one of the things that I've tried to keep myself focused on, and keep the committee focused on, is the Board of Selectmen know full well what this charter is and what it isn't. They know what's working and what can be better. And I would say that, I would ask, the Finance Committee came in, the Board came in, the Finance Committee came in very, very prepared, the Board of Selectmen came in prepared. But if this is gonna work, I would ask everyone to really, really focus on this public hearing. I think it has to be an informational sharing session. And we don't claim any ownership, any authorship here, we're wide open to. If you all got suggestions, that you're living every day and say, this really isn't working, and this is the rationale why, bring it on to that public hearing. If a s- a special town meeting is the way to go, cause the magnitude of this is such that we gotta get it right, and we gotta make our lives a little easier, cause this is what this whole thing is about, then I leave that in your hands, frankly, because the law says the Board of Selectmen, or a city council where appropriate, shall schedule this meeting. Knowing full well, you know the, the urgency of why you need to do it, and what's most important. I, I, I wanna get it right, because if we don't get it right now, we got ten more years. And why keep going into town meeting after town meeting, we're trying to change this, or the, should we be looking at a bylaw change, should we be looking at a charter change? We need to, and, and I've tried to keep us as focused as I can, I've tried to keep us as close as I can to whatever schedule we've set, cause I want people to be prepared, I want them to come in with a lot of thought given to what it is they're proposing, or why this not ought to be in the new amendment. So, I'm wide open, and I think our committee is doing. And frankly, I gotta say this publicly, it was a real pleasure working with that group of folks. They gave a lot. They put a lot of thought into what they did. They put a lot of effort into it. And Pete, even on your point, on the, uh, um, the selectmen, I think that the intent, and if you read it closely, you read closely, "The executive powers of the town shall be vested in the Board of Selectmen, which shall be deemed to be the chief executive officer of the town." We recommend that the Board of Selectmen shall have all the executive powers it is possible for the Board of Selectmen to have and to exercise. We're not looking to take away the executive office. What we are trying to do
You misquoted it, you misquoted it, cause you took out the words that it's possible to have.
Yeah.
And it, it's nebulous, a, a policy board. We have a whole binder of policies, we, and we, we don't even look at them. And we don't have the authority to impose policy, under the, the proposed language, we don't have any authority to, to impose a policy on any segment of, of town government. I'm not saying that we should.
But the charter says
Executive office is, is, is different. It, it is something. You make decisions, executive offices make decisions.
I understand.
A policy promulgation is, uh, my policy is to have a dish of ice cream every night before I go to bed. But sometimes I don't have ice cream, and if I decide I don't want, I don't have to. That's a policy. And we have policies here that we throw away or disregard.
Now, that's another issue. But I think that if you read this section closely
I did.
The intent is for this board to be the chief policymakers of the community. The formation, the promulgation, the delivery of it, the directives, the town manager is to operate by the policies set forth, and that came out very clear through this whole discussion. The town manager is to follow the policies and directives of the board. The board is not to mingle in the day-to-day operations of him implementing the policies.
I, I understand the intent, Harry.
Yeah.
My question, my quarrel is not with the intent.
Okay.
My quarrel is with the language used as I read it and understand it. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I'm not saying you are, and I'm not saying we're right. I'm just saying, that's where the discussion needs to lie, is without more semantics in the education of it, what does this really mean? How is the rubber meeting the road in Uxbridge? What are we really doing as a result of what it says? Is it misinterpreted, is it not followed, what is it? That's what we're trying to get right. And maybe language says so much, but who interprets what?
The existing language allows us to do our job.
Right.
I think the proposed language doesn't allow us to do our job. I'm not saying we do our job that the existing language allows us to do, but the possibility But the possibility is there for us to do it if we so choose. But the other, because keep in mind, the charter gives very specific duties to the town manager. Very specific.
Absolutely.
So, and, and, you know, he makes recommendations. And he appoint, makes certain appointments. And I'm not sure that we can by a policy, we, we, by a policy, direct his appointments. You see?
I, I got you. I guess what I would say from a more practical point of view is, I think the board should have the discussion as to what section two, from a more practical point of view. What would you all like it to say in your infinite wisdom, from sitting here, going through it, working with it? And say, okay, this is what we would like to see this section like. And I asked that question when we had our hearings. Much the same as I said to Sean, brand-new manager at the time. I said, Sean, you have the opportunity to create your own ideal situation. I want you to take this section of the charter and write it in such a way that it actually makes your job more efficient, more effective, and you know who's accountable for what, and we can make this thing work. And he did, and he came in. And he said, you know, frankly, I think, not to paraphrase, but I guess I have to, was that the charter language is pretty good. It seems there's a couple of things I'd make recommendations on, but it seems like it's pretty well-defined. It's just a matter of adherence to whatever the, the line of command within the charter say ought to be. So. And I'm wide o- I would hope that, that when it comes time for this public hearing, when it is scheduled. The more precise we can be with the language. And the more we can back up as to why the recommendation's made. The more convincing and compelling the argument's going to be for the committee to say, geez, that's, that's, that's a better idea. We fired more deliberation now, we had an opportunity to review it. And then say, yeah, it sounds great. And then go into whatever special meeting we're going to have, or whatever discussion we're going to have. It's the, the rationale behind it. And let's just convince the people it's the better way to go. I'm all for that.
I think that there, since I've been on it, I've seen like a lack of communications. But, and Sean and I probably have gone around a couple of times on it. But I think this charter does that, and I think it's good that the committee pointed it out. I think you're always asking, what do you want me to do? Well, if we don't sit and chat with you and see what you want as a policy to help you do your job and to work with you. Then we're not reading this charter and doing our job. And that's probably why we look like a gong show to a lot of the residents. As I was told the last time I went out to eat. And to make the job easier for you and for us. You know, to sit down and resolve these differences using this paragraph right here and working with you.
Which paragraph are you talking about now?
Where we get the authority, the policies and all the other stuff. Powers and duties. It's in here, and I think it gives us the right to do it. And for you to, to participate and say, no, I, I don't like that policy, but we'll adjust it to see what we can do to make it work with you.
I'm still not clear. Are you, are you suggesting the proposed version? Or are you?
I think it's already was in there. Wasn't it? You didn't change that with the exception of executive powers.
Well, you did change it.
Well, it's, it's coming out, but the intent is the promulgation and formulation of policies. I want you to leave that in.
I mean, w- we can leave it in. I, I, I think that from the broader sense of what it says. There is no question. And I look back on the last ten years since this charter came in. This board has always interpreted this section. And any change that we're trying to recommend, this board is the chief executive officer of the town. Not the chief administrative officer, the chief executive officer. That was the intent early on when the charter was brought.
And that's what the charter said.
Exactly.
Both for the selectmen and said the, the manager is the chief administrative officer of the town. But now with the proposed change, it no longer says that for the board of selectmen.
Well, I think one could argue that point, and I'm not, I, I don't want to get into the argument of it, but I think.
But that's the whole point. If, if we don't want to hone in on something, how do you resolve something? I don't understand.
I'm not discrediting that.
Because we don't want to.
I'm not discrediting that. I'm saying. Let me just pick you as an example. I say, okay, Pete, if that is so important. Then I would like to suggest. Why don't you take and write that section like you did with some of the town manager's section when you did at the onset? And say, this is the rationale behind why this ought to say this. Bring it into the public hearing and say, you know what, this will serve the board better. If the board then says, you know what, that's really our position. We've got five votes here that say, that's, we feel more comfortable with that language. We've had discussion as to the benefits of it. We've had discussion as to the downside of it, and it really makes sense. I can't imagine a committee that are reviewing this to say the practical day-to-day folks that are working with this policy, implementing this policy, putting it together, feel strongly, and we're going to take vote against that? If in fact the argument is compelling enough, why wouldn't we do it? I mean, we're trying to make everyone's job easier, more clearly defined, and the results better. That's all it comes down to. No matter what all this language says. We need better results. And we need people to understand their roles. So everyone's integrated well and getting the bottom line of that. I think that's essentially why this review process is built into there. Are we doing okay? If we're doing fine, then we don't need to change it. I'm not sure that that is exactly the case. So we're giving it our best shot, and we're asking for the people that are working it. Give it to us. We're happy to do it. And I know there's two, I mean, Pete, Pete, you were part of the original charter commissions. This, I'm sure, you're probably saying, you know, is everything okay? I mean, everything we did for those year and a half or so. You guys have got a lot of institutional knowledge on it. You put it together.
Yeah, he's talking about you anyway, Peter.
Yeah. Oh, Pete was on it too. Pete was on the original charter. Yeah, both were.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, I mean, Pete, really, help us out. If it helps you and it helps the board and helps the community. I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
In, in the end, I think getting, if, if and if it ends up in November. It's not so much November that's going to rush people. It's the scheduling of the public hearing. If we're allowed, let's say the AG called tonight, said you guys can schedule a public hearing, you're good to go. You could schedule it in seven days, or you could schedule it in twenty-nine or thirty days. Which then gives people a chance to sit down and closely consider this. Doesn't necessarily have an effect on November. Because in theory, if, if all had gone well, this public hearing would have occurred a couple of days ago. The notice to the public and the preparation the public would have been allowed, in theory, would have been the same. In terms of participation in the public hearing, as far as how you wa- want to cast your vote in November. That time is compressed. But in terms of the critical thinking you're going to do and the potential effective, uh, change you can affect to this document. That's going to happen at the public hearing. Probably isn't going to happen on town-town meeting floor.
I guess my suggestion and probably the conversation that needs to go with the AG is, they know, or she knows where we're at. Maybe it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask her to just put a, a timeline together for submission back to us. A suggested timeline. Based on the knowledge that they have. Not, are we okay? Can we make exceptions? But I would throw, mirror the problem right back to her and say, you know, oh, by the way. Knowing where we're at, knowing what we've done, what is your suggested timeline in terms of public hearing, uh, town meeting? Going into election?
That's worth giving a shot, but I can tell you they're, they're loathe to.
Well, I'm saying that's your problem.
Making recommendations on hypotheticals. They actually sort of refuse to do it. You sort of have to give them an actual sort of violation or an actual issue. They comment on that. The, these attorneys are very savvy. They limit their com- their comments to the actual, any sort of vi- violation. Like going outside of them.
Is the closing date for receipt of articles, is that an absolute, as discussed on your agenda? Is nine-twenty-one an absolute drop-dead date?
Yes, that's by the charter, isn't it?
Sixty days, so that's drop-dead. Okay, so therefore, either we're going to get a rule or, or we gotta redesign a whole new scheme.
We don't get a ruling by this week. If there's enough time to accomplish this, if we get this ruling. If not, we'll have the time and except to bite the bullet at that point and just sort of say, well, it isn't exactly how we would have liked. It's unfortunate, but we can't, again, this is the time to try and solve this problem, looking forward as opposed to looking backwards. We can't do anything about what happened. Let's make, try and make sure it doesn't happen again, but. And again, this isn't an easy, easily identifiable mistake. There isn't any one particular person or department that failed to do something.
Well, then that's the assumption that it is a mistake that you're missing the, the fall town meeting and that it doesn't.
Well, we missed the deadlines.
Or in its own, its own special.
Based on this filing date, that didn't start off.
The biggest, the biggest challenge is making sure people know this is the last call for revisions and getting people to this public hearing and getting them engaged. Because I think part of the problem that, it's, it seems to be evident here is that not everyone's felt like they've had their last word in on what the changes are. And to me, I think the biggest thing that we can be doing for the citizens is making sure they're aware of when that last word has to be in by, and how do we get people there? If we use the fall town meeting as a commercial vehicle to let them know that the final hearing's going to be after, I don't know that's the end of the world, you know? I'd, I'd rather spend six thousand extra dollars and get full participation or maximum participation than not and get zero participation or very few.
That's a specious argument, though. I think for anyone to come and say, I haven't had my opportunity to weigh in on this because of the amount of time this group has been delivered.
No, I agree. But in theory, in practice, everyone waits to the last minute. And until you set that, that critical moment, that means there's nothing else to weigh in afterwards. That sense of urgency doesn't rise up in most people and they'll.
And that's human nature.
And that's human nature, yeah. Yeah, we all do. So I think that the drop-dead deadline is important, you know?
We heard something this week. We could, seven days out. I mean, I'd have to ca- call a meeting and set public hearing date. And I would have September on hold. To, would be on schedule if we could make September first. But we'd have to find out this week. If we don't find out anything this week, that kind of.
Yeah. That's what the committee would have to decide.
It compresses it too tight.
Is three weeks enough to come up with recommendations?
I would.
The twenty-first, is that an, you know, is that enough time?
I would suspect yes, because I think that either there's going to be a very compelling argument for why we should change what we're going to change that night, and, and while the conversation would be there. Perhaps either I'll extend the meeting to a committee meeting to vote, or set a meeting like within a forty-eight hour notice or whatever, just to, um, to take into consideration those changes. And then do it so we can keep the timeline on. That's.
If the, the committee is rushing at the end, that's less of an issue than rushing the process.
Right.
Rushing the public's ability to consider and participate as Jay and Pete said. But if you, if you guys ended up with a week or ten days and you had to do it.
We'll do what we have to do.
That's not going to compromise the final product. Holding the public hearing seven days from tomorrow, May.
Right, we could set a, if we came in this week, we could set a meeting, I could set a meeting Monday or Tuesday. And vote on opening, having a public hearing. It has to be seven days out, so it would be at the end of the month. Which would make our total, but which would give us two we- two weeks pretty much to let everybody know it's, this is the final call on.
Is, that question, is that enough time to really get the word out there that this is the last call saloon?
We have, we have to know by this week. I don't think we can make it any other way.
And Massachusetts law allows you folks to say, you schedule the hearing, you can also conduct the hearing. I mean, I want to make that clear too. The, the law says that the board of selectmen schedule the hearing, they can also conduct it.
Well, I, I, oh, go ahead.
I've had some discussion with some of you. Either way, it works, but I, I would think it makes more sense for you guys to schedule it. And we can conduct it because we can have conversation with folks as to why we recommended what we did. And I think there's more of a comprehensive approach to why we're doing what we're doing than people understand and have the opportunity to.
And part of the plan is post the public hearing. And once the final, final has been created, is there informational sessions planned prior to the, the vote? So maybe one or two, so people could have a chance to at least not opine on how they want to change it, but give them the chance to go through and ask the questions for comprehension and understanding.
We could do that. I mean, if, if you all felt that, that that would be helpful, we could do it.
I, I think it's part and parcel with how you go about it. Like, if you're going to have a separate meeting, then, then within the separate meeting, it lives ample time to do that. If you're going to throw it in with thirty other warrant articles or twenty other warrant articles. I think we'll want to provide an informational session in advance.
It might be, I guess it would come down to how many folks participate in that public hearing and what comes as a result of it. And to be skeptical, if it goes like all our other hearings, I would assume that, um, we'll probably just take a vote following that and then bring that discussion into town meeting on the warrant article. And there will lie the opportunity to have a real detailed discussion. So, but whatever way you all feel the community would benefit from, I'd say we can talk about that.
So the next step is to really hear from the AG this week?
We have to hear this week. I don't think it'll be too tight if we don't.
Okay.
All right, so thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Harry.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you to the committee too.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information. If I might, please. Let's see, I've discussed this with a couple of people. And I would direct your attention to Article two, Legislative Branch, Section four, Annual Town Meeting. The annual town meeting shall be held on dates fixed by bylaw. The annual town meeting shall meet in regular sessions twice in each calendar year. The first such meeting to be held on a date fixed by bylaw shall be primarily concerned with the determination of matters involving the expenditure of town funds, including but not limited to the adoption of the annual operating budget for all town agencies and for the purpose of electing officers and which shall be deemed the annual town meeting. On the very next page. The second such meeting, the powers of which shall be deemed to be those of a full annual town meeting. Except that it shall not include the election of officers or the determination of other matters to be decided by ballots of voters shall be held during the last four months, the last four calendar months on a date fixed by bylaw. What the charter says is that on the full annual town meeting or the second annual town meeting. You may not in fact have an article that is to be decided by the voters. I have mentioned this to a couple of people. The whole idea of a special town meeting to provide more time may in fact be advantageous to the whole process. The charter is silent on the purpose of special town meetings other than a reference to Massachusetts general law. Please read the chart. Thank you.
I kind of agree with you on that, Howard, but that's okay. Just ballots of the voters. Not a two-thirds majority.
State law, when they talk to a town meeting, a, a ballot election is also called a town meeting. Where we vote by ballot.
Right.
You see? Although the, the charter talks about the primary function of the spring, but, but the reality is otherwise. The reality is that any ten signatures get the article on the town meeting warrant, either spring or fall. And we can't say no because it's supposed to be intended for something else. That's where the, what do they call it? The rubber hits the road or whatever it is. That's why the language. That's why the language used is very, very important, and it's not the intent that counts. It's what the language says, and there are a lot of cases where the language is in conflict with what we're required to do. We can't put theoretically by the charter, an article on the warrant received after sixty days before the town meeting. So think about that, that means somebody comes in with a petition article fifty days before the town meeting. We tell them, no, we won't, we can't put it on, so they go out and get more signatures and call a special. How does that serve anybody's interest? You see? We have to, I look at things and say, does it make sense? If it doesn't make sense, does it unduly handicap us in conducting our business, then I wanna change that.
In this case, the matter of whether, the matter that would be decided upon in November at town meeting is whether to conduct a ballot.
That's correct.
Which is not the same as conducting a ballot.
That's correct.
Which would allow us, which is what allowed, because the matter doesn't, this particular matter that we're dealing with in November has nothing to do with a ballot, other than putting it on the ballot. So that's a distinction I would make.
Well, we can't go anywhere with it right now, it's a small.
Yep, don't want to hear anything.
See if you can take, is.
Yeah.
Next.
Can you take, uh, Mr. Tracy, Mr. Tracy next, who's been sitting here?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, he is, he is next.
Yeah, he is next.
He is next.
All right, Taff Memorial Park, Mr. Tracy. Just sign in and.
Uh, first, thanks for agreeing to hear my proposal. I am a freelance illustrator and web designer. I teach a few classes down at RISD and regularly I put out a body of work. I think you folks have a photocopy of this.
Yes.
If you don't, I brought extras to show, but this is what I was talking about. Last few years, I've been putting together a series of work, which is basically flowers and abstract paintings. And I was about to complete the series, and the thought occurred to me that it would be very interesting to present them rather than in a sort of cold gallery setting with white walls, but to go with the flower theme, to present them in the forest. It just seemed interesting. I grew up in Uxbridge and there is a small section of Taff Memorial Park, which is, I used to go there and catch frogs and it's a nice little area and I thought that would be just perfect. My understanding is one of the main concerns would be parking. There is a small lot outside the entrance on Carney Street, which holds about ten cars and any additional cars. It seems like the overflow could be handled by the parking lot on the other side of the park. That's about it, I have a sample of the work, if you folks are curious or I'm open to.
Sure. Can you give me the date and the time, too, when you come back, just so, we don't, we weren't clear on that?
The date and time hasn't been set, I want to get your permission to do it first.
Okay, that's what I.
We brought it here, so you might as well, you know, look at it. You might as well look at it.
Getting permission versus regarde.
It's on a show, I figured I'd show you folks.
That's fine.
That's a photo?
It is a combination of photo and printing and hand painting. It's actually a technically reverse transparency painting, where I'm painting on the backside of a piece of transparent film.
Get your fingerprints on it. No? It's the same reason that you lost hospital, the A T S, so it's huge, so.
Do you guys see this over here or?
Even when you're painting on the backside of a piece of, is the cameraman sleeping? If I hold this up, can you push the camera to pick it up?
Not sleeping now.
Hold the other one up so they can pick it up with that camera.
Right, that one, right there, yeah.
All right?
You got it?
Excellent.
Done it.
It's the advertiser.
Good.
So as far as date and time, you don't, you have a couple of dates and time in mind?
Personally hoping to aim for the end of the summer, but it's been a couple of weeks getting in front of you, gentlemen. So if we could, sometime before the weather turns, if I could do it this season, that'd be great, so that gives us all the fall. That actually is better for a lack of bugs.
Subject to the board's rule, you saw the memorandum from Public Safe Safety, the parking, those were the parking concerns, we do wanna keep on-street. We wanna keep parking, we didn't want to see any parking on Carney Street. And so, subject to those, parking at those two particular local locations, Public Safe Safety has no issues.
Is this going to be on the Carney Street end or the Merriwood Street?
The Carney Street end.
Okay.
As you just walk in, there's like a small opening that, I guess it's an area for picnicking, but it really doesn't look like it's been used in a long time.
That's correct, okay.
Be nice to have something there.
That's what I thought it'd be, nice to have something there.
Yeah, but there's a parking lot there.
Yeah, it's been paved recently, in the last handful of years.
So it sounds like the boards are mental, like, I guess you just kinda need to just give us a date and time now, in order for them to make a motion.
Okay, is there one preferable?
Take a Saturday.
Take a Saturday, okay.
Pick a day and time.
Pick a day and time, I would, for.
Or pick two of them and we can do an R.
Okay.
You could have a rain date.
Okay, perfect, right now, would you like an email? Do you guys have a calendar I could look at?
Here you go.
Oh. September fifteenth with a rain date of the sixteenth?
Perfect.
Aim for, I don't know, noon to about four or five o'clock?
Twelve to five, twelve to five.
I moved that the board allow Mr. Tracy to use the Taff Memorial Park for the outdoor art show on Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, with a rain date of Sunday. Sixteenth, September sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, from twelve to five P M.
Second.
Subject to the parking restriction noted on the attached memorandum from the Public Safety Committee.
The main seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
You're all invited.
Thank you.
You submitted the waiver as well, I think Tracy said.
Yep.
You need a lick of license? One day.
For a rain date.
All right, Church Street, there's parking signs up there at Good Shepherd.
Yep.
They need to be removed, so we need a motion to.
Make a motion to remove the no parking signs on Church Street and Linwood.
Second.
The main seconded, to remove signs from Church Street and Linwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Before we go off this, Peter.
Yeah.
You know, the park, the playgrounds that we put there for the kids when we used it for school, for the preschool. We spent a lot of money on that, and I don't know if it's feasible to move some of the stuff to another location or whether we just leave it and forget about it. Can we look into that?
We can, I think we can look into it, the problem with playgrounds is, we'd have to put it on another, I guess, another town property, I don't know if we could, I don't know where, I don't exactly know what's up there.
Reloc.
Reloc.
Yeah, there's a lot of space at Reloc still.
What tends to happen with playgrounds is, once they go, towns tend to let them, just because of the liability involved with public playgrounds and with the deterioration of equipment. So I guess we'd sorta have to look and see, um, talk to the insurance people probably first.
Either that or if this stuff has value, sell it, you know? I mean, we, we paid a substantial amount of money for it, and I don't like to abandon money. That's the Armenian in me.
That, it costs a lot of money, like.
I don't think that's just Armenian. It carries a couple different, uh.
Douglas Pike road closing, pavement replacement?
Good deal.
I moved that the board approved the road closure on Douglas Pike. Sean, what's the, the time open?
Uh, if it's approved tonight, they'll be actually starting some construction tomorrow, so the detour will go into effect. Um, he's looking at a maximum of three weeks to open and close, get it completely buttoned up and finish paving.
Is that, what does that shut off up there, is that?
Um, essentially, no houses will be affected, there is a small portion of Uxbridge beyond that, up over the hill.
Yeah, it's way up there.
But through Public Safety, we had talked about it and Chief Kessler and Acting Chief Emmerich are coordinating with Burlville for any calls that may come out in that general area for mutual aid response.
So if we.
Through the fourth?
I'm sorry?
Fourteen through the fourth?
Uh, three, three weeks, yes.
You don't think we need to give anyone any bit of notice, no one travels to that road ever?
I mean, there is some travel, it's all local traffic, you know, based on the research that I've done. You know, right now, the detour sends you down.
Ironstone Street, Old Ironstone goes right around.
Yep, continues down Aldrich Street. Again, I, you know, it, it's all local traffic for the most part. You know, people will either be using Glendale, I know for a fact, like, if the fire has to go out for a call, you know, say, brush fire or something of that nature, they, you know, they would be taking Glendale and then that portion of West Ironstone Road to get to the other part or the other side of the Douglas Pike. We could easily, you know, put out some notices to the people. I have every intention of putting notices up on the website, just as far as status of construction. You know, I mean, we, we can do whatever is needed to, to get the word out. But as of right now, I mean, the, the last residence is just prior to the construction site, out to the north on the Uxbridge side.
You wouldn't be doing any, you're starting, say, this week or whatever, it's not, it'll be closed then or are you doing?
Closed, if, if it's approved tonight, the detour will be fully in effect. Uh, the signs are up, they're, they're all covered at the moment, you know, pending this hearing.
My general preference is to give someone notice if you live there, just, who knows? But how does it impact the work schedule for work balance? Is there other stuff people are doing, are you waiting to do this, fall behind if we don't start tomorrow or what?
Um, I, I mean, honestly, it's, you know, it's the contractor's schedule. I mean, as of right now, I mean, he, he's been ready to go ever since I noticed to proceed. The biggest, well, I shouldn't say the biggest, the, the only delay has been getting the contracts, you know, fully complete and executed. At that time, we had received a schedule, which, you know, prompted, well, he wanted to start basically the day he got the contracts. But until we had that schedule, we were unaware of when he wanted to start and, you know, this process actually had to occur. So, I mean, he, he's ready to go, I mean, it'll just push things off further.
It's not a heavily traveled road.
No, no.
It really not. It can't inconvenience anyone very greatly.
They go around.
They go around, yes.
I hope it doesn't interfere with my newspaper girl.
We'll make sure of that.
I'll second your motion, Jay.
From eight fourteen to, what's the close date?
Nine four.
Nine four, okay.
Motion being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gravel permit. Pretty much, we're okay, paid. Good report, Ben. Oh, we got him. He's going out to Douglas Pike.
Right there.
I just wanted to say, good, good, uh, right now, good job down on that report here. I'll make a motion that the board approved gravel permit renewal application for permit number seventy-one, one seventy south, one seventy-five South Street.
Second.
Motion being seconded, approved gravel permit number seventy-one, one seventy-five South Street, map fifty-five parcel two-two-five-five, all in favor?
Discussion, discussion?
Discussion.
Thank you. You all have the material, I assume. If you look at the annual report filed by the applicant, it's dated, the permit number, the date and so forth, the owner, the address, the map and parcel number, and then amount of material removed, cubic yards, twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-six cubic yards. And area excavated, or type material filled, area excavated, two acres, restoration, five acres, and so forth. On the back of that is the memorandum from Ben. And if you look at the third paragraph, Mr. Richardson has intermittently mined the area over the past few years. It appears from the site inspection and the annual report, approximately two acres, twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-six cubic yards of material has been removed. Now, it's interesting, I don't know how, aside from the fact that the applicant said it was twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-six, anybody on the face of the earth could go and say that this is the figure. And then so on and so forth. We used to have a head of the DPW, Larry Bombara, and then he had an engineer, remember? Peter, you were around here then, okay. And I think they were always pretty busy. Now we have Ben Sherman, head of the DPW, and he doesn't have an engineer helping him. So he's doing apparently what two people used to do before. And if you look at this and really read it and understand it, you have to come to the conclusion, if the brain switch is turned on, that this is an absolute waste of time for Ben Sherman to be doing. There may be cases where an issue comes up and we want him or somebody with his knowledge to go out and inspect something. But to have him spend time doing clerical duties makes no sense at all. And to charge someone four hundred dollars to renew a permit is nothing except stealing under the cover of law. Now, we ask these questions, how much have you removed and so forth? But there is no limit, I mean, we don't say, well, that's too much or too little or not enough. I don't know why we ask the question, but we do, and it's answered. There is no value added here, and if Ben Sherman has the time to do this stuff, then, I don't know. I, I, it's hard for me to equate that with the requirement that all of us should be looking for is the efficient, effective, and economical operation of all town agencies.
We're working on it.
Well.
Yep, we're working on it.
Yeah.
We need, we need good code enforcement. Good job.
This has nothing to do with code enforcement.
It's an inspection, is it?
No one alleges, no one has alleged that there's something amiss here.
Well, it's just like you on the Board of Health, you gotta get out and do those inspections, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Really? Did you get rid of that rooster yet, did you take that?
Um, I don't know what's happening with that.
Ben makes the time in his schedule because he's been asked to, quite simply, there's no one else.
I, I know that.
So he doesn't have to, does he have the time, not really, but, I mean.
Well, okay, you're the town manager, and your job is to look for the.
And we're working on it, exactly, yeah.
Efficient, effective, and economical. And if you think that this is a good utilization of his time, then that's your decision. But I find it hard to think that.
I didn't adopt the gravel permit by law. I'm, I'm enforcing the, the will of the Board of Selectmen of this town.
Well, okay.
The bylaw needs to be carried out by someone, town employees, certain, certainly. The bylaw needs to be carried out by someone, town employees, certain, certainly cost-effective. I can't judge the efficiency. All I'm saying is that this is a poli, my job is to carry out the policies, the bylaws of the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen can, I suppose, by majority vote, say, listen, Mr. Manager, we would like you to do such and such. However, as I read the charter, you can say to the board, thank you very much, but I think doing this is not an efficient way to do this job. You see?
I do.
We, we can make a recommendation to you. We can do it individually, which carries just our own weight, or the board can do it by vote. Same thing with appointments. We can say, we would like you to make certain appointments based on this or that criteria. If we do that as a vote, that's seen, but still, it's your appointment. And if you think that we should, you shouldn't do it based on those things, it's up to you. It's part of your job to be an active but non-voting member of the board to say, well, thank you very much for your, you know, input, but I don't think this is the way it should be done. That's all.
Okay, we are working on it. Next. Vote four-one? What's that? Is the vote four to one?
We didn't take the vote.
We didn't take the vote.
No, we did. We, no, we didn't because of discussion.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. Were there, motion made and seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
I'm sorry, Peter, did you vote nay or did you abstain?
Um, I, I, I'll vote yes, yes. But thanks for letting us know that we didn't vote on it because, you know, we do that often. We get carried away and then we, we don't actually make the vote.
But you're going to vote in the affirmative?
Yes, I'll vote in affirmative. Even though we're stealing four hundred dollars.
I have a space for a nay vote.
That wouldn't change the, um...
But it would be in principle.
The principle is the amount of the fee. If I were Mr. Richardson, I would, and you charge a fee, I would pay it and then file a claim in, um, in court for fraud.
You don't always do that.
Under the cover of law.
Okay, let's go to, uh, appointment, poll workers. I think you all have a sheet, so...
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion that the board appoint the poll workers on the poll worker two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen appointments sheet list dated eight thirteen twelve. Second.
Motion being made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and the, um, that list is going to be made part of the mission.
That'll be attached to the, I mean...
And that was in the most...
That is, yeah.
Okay, we have, um, cultural council, Stephen O'Connell, appointment.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I think if I remember correctly, you can only be on that for two years.
I'm gonna abstain.
So you have, okay.
Abstain.
I think you can only be on that for two terms. Is that right? I know there's a limit on that. Or there used to be, I think.
I don't know.
Did you get that?
No.
Off the top of my head.
Tracy would be the... She might know right off the top of her head.
All right, we have another cultural council, Beth Pittman. So moved.
Second.
Motion being made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Peter, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Why are you abstaining?
I shouldn't have to, but my wife is the chair of the cultural council, so I, I don't...
Oh, no, you don't have to, Dan. You, you can if you want, but you don't have to.
Okay, we have, uh, appointment for the council on aging, Chris Cupsus.
So moved. Second.
Being made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Another appointment cable advisory committee, Tim Rice.
So moved. Second.
Being made and seconded. All in favor?
Uh, uh, discussion?
Abstain.
It was a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, that I mentioned that, you know, they went a whole year and a year, two years without any minutes. And Bruce was gonna talk to them. What was the result of your talking to them?
They're supposed to keep the minutes.
Well, we know that.
Now that we have a committee, we have a committee.
But they had had a committee.
I know, but they never had, they never had enough people most of the time, most of the meetings.
So, okay, but that had been going on for years. So why don't we tell them, thank you very much, but we can't have you on the committee?
Well, I think now, I think Tim would, we're all set now.
Take care of that, yeah.
If you only have a couple of years, go to a meeting on that committee and they sit there and talk about it, but they don't vote, what's the problem?
Well, that means you're not doing anything. That means there's nothing to do.
Well, you can't do anything until you get a majority, boy.
But it's been two years.
Well, why don't you go down there and sit down and help them out?
They don't need help. There's nothing for them to do, Tim. Did you call the vote?
Oh, call for it now.
Aye.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I should abstain, right? I don't, I don't wanna vote for myself.
You don't have to.
Okay. Down to the, uh, you are?
Oh, sure.
The ad hoc?
Yeah, we'll keep this quick. I sent out an email earlier, um, today, uh, with some more detailed information. The next two items on the agenda kinda go hand in hand. Essentially, before this board was reorganized, uh, the previous board, we created a, a committee to look at the goaling, um, eval, uh, for the town manager for the, for the current year and for future upcoming years. And as part of that committee, uh, we put together a, a good team with representatives from both the charter, review committee, uh, as well as, uh, employees from within Town Hall, citizens. Ed Mahari was a participant of it. And actually, I'd like to kinda acknowledge Harry for his participation. Kelly, um, here in Town Hall for her participation. Peter, uh, was on the committee as well as myself, representing the Board of Selectmen at the time. Christian Carrier was a, a public citizen who participated. Uh, Ed, as the moderator, participated, and Sean, uh, was involved as well. And essentially, the goal of the committee was to go out and look at the evaluation process as it's occurred in the last couple of years and make a recommendation back to the board for future, uh, evaluation periods as how, uh, the process might be improved and the tools used in that process improved. Uh, I think the major takeaways and recommendations, uh, that the committee had put forth was that the evaluation process historically has been a bit of a surprise and ad hoc, uh, at best, uh, from year to year. And wanted to be able to wrap that, uh, process a little more tight, uh, the whole evaluation process more tightly into a predictable format that not only the board, uh, can use to measure the results of the town manager, but the town manager can use to understand how he's going to be goal and measured at the end of the review period. I think the, the other kinda key takeaway was, uh, the, the process itself, as flawed, you know, as flawed as we, we, the committee believed it was, also didn't occur well enough to even, often enough rather, to kind of be self-healing in some respects. And so what the team has done is, is kinda put forward a, um, a revised evaluation form with some recommended timelines and procedures for this board to consider. It's ultimately the board's decision here to either accept these procedures and timelines, make revisions to them, but to give you a starting point, or give us as, as a board, a starting point, uh, to work with the evaluation, um, process with, with the town manager. So tonight, what I, what I'd like to present is just kind of an overview of what that procedure is so that we can kinda look to getting Sean on track with his first evaluation by this board, and have, uh, the board buy into that process and, and agree to it. And then as a conclusion, um, to tonight, look more in depth at some of the tools, the evaluation forms, provide opinions to it so that we can lock that down in our next meeting, uh, and present that to Sean and say, hey, we're looking to have an evaluation period. Here's the date that we're evaluating on. Here's the criteria that we plan to evaluate you on. So we're all in agreement and there's no surprises at, at that level. And then at the end of the evaluation period, use the tools and go through the process of scoring it and making sure it's part of his HR file, uh, one, so we have justification as to whatever, um, recommendations we make for town manager for the future. And two, anything that we're contractually obligated from a compensation perspective, we have it documented and it becomes more of a formalized process than what it has been in the past. So that's, uh, kinda in a nutshell what, what these two items on the agenda are about tonight. As I said, I'd sent out the form to review, so I don't wanna go through the details of, of what's in kinda the, the rubrics here. And quite frankly, uh, there was a lot of effort and, and hard work put in by the team to think through the evaluation criteria, and I would ask that the board kinda spend some time thinking about it and making sure it's right for this board and this town manager. Because we certainly, uh, recognize that we were a group of opinionated people who thought these would capture the needs of the town and, and the needs of the town manager for self-evaluation. But certainly, uh, didn't wanna overstep the boundaries of what the board does as the manager for, for, um, or the overseer of Sean's duties and responsibilities as defined in the charter.
So you have the dates already set in here?
So what I've done, uh, in the document is kinda outlined some proposed dates, but anything in this document is fair game for this board to change. Uh, the one thing that I thought would be helpful tonight is if we could take a motion to let Sean, to define what the review period is and when he's actually gonna get this review done now so that he knows, that we all know that we're working towards a timetable that, that we're agreed on. So what, what's suggested in this document at this point, and, and let me just go through the procedures. We can talk more specifically about the dates, but the, the recommended process is that the period of evaluation, what we're calling the review period, would start when this board, board formed, which would be May twenty-third of this year, when, uh, Peter and Tim were signed in. Through, uh, the arbitrary date that I'm, not arbitrary, the proposed date I'm putting in there is the end of November, uh, to be the first review period, not wait till next year. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The committee felt, um, that, again, more regular feedback could only help the relationship between the board and the town manager and the town manager and the board. Secondly, um, influencing the overall budgeting process that we're gonna go into at the end of this year and setting out the budget for two thousand fourteen, if there was any contractual obligations or performance-related obligations to provide financial compensation to the town manager, we should certainly agree to what that is prior to going into the budgeting process, though we could earmark it, but at least make sure everyone was aware of what's gonna be at, at stake there. So the first item was to recommend that time period from May twenty-third to November thirtieth, given that we'll have a lot going on with, with fall town meeting, uh, potentially that we would pick up, uh, the actual review process, at the conclusion of town meeting and the conclusion of November. Secondly, um, the process as it's defined is that post the, the review period, we'd ask that within a week's time that the town manager submit to the board a self-evaluation report. And, and that report would essentially be this particular document that's here based on the approved changes that, that we would agree upon within, now in the next meeting. Using that information, we would, uh, individually be distributed a blank report that we would fill out and provide commentary, our commentary on his performance within. We'd submit that to the, the chairman of the board, and the chairman and the vice chair would use that information to kinda cultivate, uh, a consensus report. That consensus report then would be reviewed within the town manager. Uh, and the town manager would be given the ability to provide feedback that would be done, uh, on a one-to-one basis with the, the chairman of the board and the, the town manager. And as a result of that meeting, then, the chairman could then write a summary synopsis of what, what the, what the interaction was, the commentary from the town manager, what the feeling of the board was, so that we had a documented, uh, item that we could put in that fairly summarized his performance level. And at that point, then, we would have a public review where we'd review that synopsis. And upon the board's approval and agreement, we would, we'd then submit that, uh, and vote to include that in his HR file and then make any necessary recommendations, uh, around budgeting for the, for the upcoming year. At the outset of that, then the next step is just, how do we go out and then set, set the new, the next period for, for definition? Uh, the committee felt strongly that, that the, uh, evaluation periods should, uh, we'd like to see them done quarterly. Again, this is at the board's discretion. But given where we kinda fell into a, a period of the board changing, when the committee met and before all the recommendations could be finalized and put forth in front of this board, we would look to kinda get into that pattern of doing quarterly reviews, uh, at the outset of this initial review. So that's, uh, essentially what this document says. And again, I think the consensus I'm trying to get from the board tonight is that we would agree that Sean would get his first review, uh, in December of this year for the period from May twenty-third, when, uh, when the board was organized, uh, through November thirtieth, right after fall town meeting. Any questions?
At least we have some time this time, and it should go a lot easier.
Plan your vacation accordingly. You know, we like to have you here while we do this.
What's that?
Plan your vacation accordingly. We like you to be here while we do this.
Oh, okay. Depending whether or not he wants to be here.
I, I was thinking about the evaluation process, and to that end, I, I asked Tracy for copies of the last evaluation and I went through it. And what struck me, and the same thing held true when, when I was here before, I know that a vast majority of the board members, looking at the evaluation forms, really had no basis for their evaluations. They just, they, they, you, you didn't know, you didn't have the information. I don't think there's anybody that spent more time around Town Hall and over the years and getting, I get information from everybody and, you know, so forth. And I couldn't answer those questions. The vast majority of them. Try to do this in a, and so what happens is, we just, we have a tendency to take the medium wrench. You know, everything is, okay, 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 okay. So what do you end up with? You know, and to do this on a quarterly basis is gonna be, that's all we're gonna be doing. Quarterly, that's what? Six meetings in Board of Selectmen? I mean, it goes by like, like that. To me, I evaluate the town manager. I look at what his job is to provide for the efficient, effective, and economical operation of all agencies under the control of the town manager. Okay. Has that been done? You know, demonstrate to me how this has been made more efficient, this has been made more effective, this has been made more economical. Those are the things that we can look at and quantify and qualify and say, yes, we understand those things. The other, it, it, we get bogged down in the details. And we really, if you're really honest and say, gee, you know, do I know this interaction with this group or that group or so forth? No, we don't. We don't. And, and that's been the, the downfall of, you know, this has been ten years now of managers. And it's been the same every year, exactly the same. And every year, we change the evaluation form, but it ends up looking pretty much like the last one. I, I haven't had it, I looked at it tonight. Uh, Tim, let me look at his copy. But I think there's, there's too much there.
Sure, and that's, and that's fine.
That's all.
You know, as I said, this was, the committee respected the fact, it's the board's decision. Whether there's one question on here, zero questions, the board doesn't have to use this. This was, uh, to provide a starting point. And was really more about proposing a process than it was proposing exactly how you evaluate. Because we felt the gap was the process.
How he's being evaluated, you know, what are you looking at?
Correct.
You know? I want you to take Hill two oh nine by tomorrow morning, nine o'clock. Okay, that's what I gotta do. It's easy.
Well, that's exactly what we, we discussed, 'cause historically, at least with the evaluations we've been pros, I've been part of, we got to form three months for a period that had already transpired nine months. So for nine months, he didn't know what we were gonna evaluate him on, and then, you know, we had a month to kinda evaluate. So the idea and really, I, the board was, uh, the committee, rather, was, wanted to get ahead of the curve here and really talk about the process and making sure we all were in agreement that we understood what the process was, so there'd be no confusion of expectation. So, uh, absolutely, go through it, Peter. If, if the, the, uh, the questions you don't think are, are applicable or, or fit, um...
I would suggest that the next meeting, we just kind of mark this up.
They may be good questions, they may be fair, but the question is, do we possess the knowledge to make a judgment on it?
Correct.
And if we're not, then, you know, the tendency to just write something down is overwhelming.
That's right. And there's certain, there's notes inherent suggestions that say, particularly for things like, and one of the examples that the committee used is, you know, board, committee, commission relations. We understand the relationship of how Sean works with us, how he works with the finance committee. Am I the best person to judge that, or should I be talking with the chairman of the finance committee and saying, well, Sean's never showed up, or he's there every week, you know, calling me too many times at night to find out what's going on? And there's recommendations as to who might be part of that feedback group and might not necessarily be just this five-member board, but could potentially tap the right resources. And I think.
And if we don't know, then Sean's monthly reports, he could conclude that. I attended the conservation commission and I attended the finance, so that we know that he's at least attended. And, you know, saves us from going around checking up to say, oh, how was it? How was the report?
So like I said, it's a framework, so I think the next meeting, we're going to have an agenda item just to, I'd like to kind of vote whether this form includes one question or 50 questions. I don't know what the number is, but if everyone around this table could just send me their feedback before the next meeting, I'll put it together, the proposed one, and I'd like to kind of vote that in. Anything that's debatable, we can figure out how to handle. But for tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we set Sean's review period from May 23rd, 2012, through November 30th, 2012, for his first review.
So moved? And made second at all in favor?
Aye. I have a comment, if the board doesn't mind, about what to do with the evaluation and all that. I'd like the board to kind of look into what surrounding towns are paying their town manager and just give that some thought.
I can tell you, they're all paying too much.
Could be.
I just would like you to look at that.
You can take this one if you want.
Just take mine. I'll send you a different version. I have an older version of Word copy that I can send you. Absolutely. However, if you want to do it electronically, if you want to do it, it doesn't matter. Just let me know if you do write it out, it's here, and I'll make sure to come down and get it.
All right.
Thanks for the new table, Sean.
Thanks for noticing.
You must have known this was coming.
Being honest on that table, too. 13, we got, that warrant is just a preview, there's nothing on it that. We're going to go through that, and I guess there's really, whether it's an article we're going to want. There's no numbers, there's nothing. Have you looked at it?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
And there are some things that shouldn't be on there. So are we going to go through them?
Yeah, no, we, yeah, hold on there, we can go through them and just, that's what we got it for.
We don't need that last sentence in accordance with the Oxford Home Rule Charter.
Which, what are you on?
On any of the warrant articles. I mean, by state law and by the charter, we vote to put things on the warrant, period. We don't have to state that on every article. I'm trying to save ink.
We put this on due to the backlash we had by not having it last, the last couple of town meetings.
But, but that was.
Issue was made by a resident, well, there's been an issue with this term's sponsor.
Well, that's correct, and I discussed that.
Do you have an alternative? We entertain an alternative, if you can come up with something better.
The issue came up, and I was watching the meeting here. And Jay said, how come we're voting to sponsor these articles? We haven't even voted if we're going to, you know, in favor of them yet. And David Genero said, only the board can sponsor an article on the warrant. And the day after, I went to him, I said, here, here's the charter, show me where it says that. Well, it doesn't say that. That's right, it doesn't say that. The board votes to put things on the warrant.
And that's what sponsorship is. Sponsorship isn't recommendation, equal recommendation.
Read the definition of sponsor.
I agree with you, but the way it is used colloquially in this context, I agree with you 100%. However, the common use of the term sponsor is not the way it's used here. The board sponsors the inclusion of this on the warrant. That's all, that's why the recommendation process is totally separate.
Inclusion, we vote to put things on the warrant.
Term used in this municipal government is sponsor. It's used in every, it's been, we, we didn't necessarily invent the word. We take our lead from the way the rest of the world does it.
I've been around a long time, more than 20 years, and this sponsor has been a relatively new thing, a very new thing. The board votes to put articles on the warrant.
And that's how.
And it may be sponsored by anybody, but.
So, so in the past, what did they use for verbiage, or they just didn't? It was just on?
It was on, it may be submitted by somebody, you can put that on, submitted by so-and-so, but the board votes to put it on.
It does have to be sponsored by a multi-member board, which is why the fire chief cannot sponsor. The Home Rule Charter, the charter says.
But does the charter say?
Forget the word sponsor, Sean. The fire chief can come to the board and say, I'd like you to put an article on the warrant. The board can say, yes, we will, or the board can say, no, we won't. You know, customarily, you'd put it on unless you have strong objections to it. But that's not, you don't have to sponsor the article. And we have to put on the warrant. Articles that come to us by majority vote of a multiple-member body. That's a ministerial task. We also have to put on the warrant the subject matter of anything requested by 10 registered voters. That's a ministerial act that we do. We're not sponsoring it, we're putting it on the warrant.
Does the warrant have to say?
Sponsor? No, no, absolutely not.
Does it have to even say who voted it included?
Doesn't have to say. Only the board can put something on the warrant.
And now usually we would cover it. We never went through this dance and around.
And this is a personal thing. I feel once you get to the town meeting floor, for those that are getting involved and haven't been deep into this issue, that sponsorship is misleading, the word. I think it, it.
It is.
It's.
It is.
They believe it's.
Sponsorship implies.
If we don't, it implies, sorry, that's exactly the word, it implies support for.
Yes, yes.
And if we don't have to use the word sponsor, and we don't have to actually say who put it on there.
Well, it's helpful, for instance, if Joe Jones asked the board to put an article on the warrant, and we agree that it should be on the warrant, it's appropriate to say submitted by Joe Jones.
The word the charter uses is filed. I cannot file.
Yep.
An article. The fire chief cannot file an article.
No, I understand that.
So what I'm asking is if, so we have, we have the word. Oh, I'm asking, we have the word.
Must receive a petition filed by various things.
Shall receive.
Now, interestingly enough, state law doesn't use the word petition. It says the board of selectmen shall submit on the warrant for the annual town meeting the subject matter requested by any 10 voters for the annual or 100 voters for a special. The subject matter of any article.
We're operating under the impression that a non-elected person working for this town, a department head, say, has no way of getting, individually getting a motion, getting an article on the warrant.
Not correct. They can ask the board of selectmen. They can't require, you know, we have the, we have the option of putting it on.
Yes, no.
We have the option of saying no. And many times, we've had town, you know, department heads wanting an article on the warrant, and the board has said, no. Other times, we said, yes. But we have that option.
They can submit the, submit the article to us.
That's correct. Now, we make the decision.
Make the decision whether to put it on and.
Yes. Yes.
So the resident who was reading this, was reading this as an exclusive list. Can, basically, the board of selectmen can receive submissions from only these three groups, even though the charter doesn't say that. That's the way this particular resident was reading it, because basically, we were told, he's not a, he's not a multi-member body. He doesn't follow, he's not a town officer, a multi-member body, or a.
Therefore, we're not under obligation to put it on.
What anyone could call is, hey, Peter, I'm thinking about this, would you please put this on? Propose it to the board to be put on.
That's correct.
You see the, it's just a, it's just a question of interpretation.
My whole hangup is that you do, if I'm a layman and I walk into that town meeting, it says sponsored by the board of selectmen, and it says unfavorable action voted 5-0 by board of selectmen, and you get confused.
These guys are crazy, which is true, of course.
If we can legally accept, if we, if you, the board, can legally accept a submission from an individual, an appointed individual in this town, then we don't need to, I agree, we don't need to include this.
We can have somebody from East Overshule. Come to the board, yes, you can. And say, you know, would you like, would you please put this article on the warrant? We can do that.
Sure.
We're not required to, but we can.
Where does the 10 registered voters category?
Then we don't, we can't veto it going on the. At that point. So my recommendation would be that we just take that.
If there's a petition to call a special town meeting, and the board doesn't want to, and we refuse to do it, there are provisions in state law that name other officials who can call a special town meeting.
But I think it's only worth noting if something was actually put on outside of the board of selectmen. We're kind of the default.
That's correct.
And then if, would be the recommendation.
Or employees that are looking to resolve something or whatnot. And so we represent them.
The town. Yeah, this is basically saying, for the townspeople, was it put on by the town? Or was it put on by a private citizen?
Yeah.
I think it's probably the level of delineation we would need to get.
I agree, I thought of this last year, I think the word sponsor is terrible, because it suggests endorsement.
We're the only ones that put it on.
So the action here is we're going to remove the sponsorship line from the warrant.
It doesn't say sponsorship, but just in accordance with the Oxford Home Rule Charter, Home Rule Charter.
I'm sorry.
We don't need that. The word sponsor isn't used here.
Oh, it is.
Oh, sponsor, okay.
Just delete the whole thing.
Okay. Then it says placed on the warrant by the BOS on, you know, we need to vote on putting things on the warrant.
I think sponsor could just be replaced by filed by. That's the term that the charter uses.
Submitted.
Accept, submit, or submitter.
It's pretty generic.
Submitter or filer?
Well, in this case, if the finance director.
Is the sponsor.
Sponsors article, there's nothing wrong with putting, he's the sponsor, and we're voting to put it on. That's, that's fine. That states the fact. And everybody knows who put this on, who wanted it, the finance director. Well, I'm either the authority of the board of selectmen.
He'll end up speaking to it.
He'll end up speaking for it, or if we could speak on it, you know.
So you're suggesting we leave sponsor in there and just remove any reference to the board of selectmen because we're the default?
That's correct. The word sponsor is, okay, this guy is going to defend this article.
Right.
If I have a question, I will call in advance and get an answer.
Right, just remove the board of selectmen from any attachment to the article, unless we've come up personally and sponsored it. Like a bylaw change, we would sponsor.
If we so desire.
So the parenthetical statement you want removed completely?
Yeah, we don't need it, it serves no purpose.
I guess we just start from the top and go through these one at a time, and they're pretty generic.
Yeah, it is. There's no money values in any of this.
Oh, no, it's just more or less just a prelim on things that they're going to come in, they'll fill in the.
Fill in the blanks.
Really, the first one, starting one, I guess, is seven, Article seven.
Community guidance.
Community guidance.
Oh, you just, what, you want to question about the specific one?
Yeah, we'll just go through it as we go.
Okay, yes.
We're not really going to.
Article seven. Community guidance committee as a town agency. I have no objection to people using the land on Sutton Street as a guide, no objection, whatever. I don't see any benefit to anyone by having it a town agency. As soon as we do that, they have to abide by all the cumbersome rules and regulations and procedures that are attached to governmental operations.
And the group has requested it.
Huh?
The group has requested it.
No, I know they requested it, but, you know, we're not obligated to accede to any request. I'm saying from the standpoint of the town, the government, there's no benefit to us or to them, really. What's the benefit to them?
The benefit revolves specifically around Article eight is the establishment of the revolving fund.
But they, they are a private group, okay.
But they don't want to go through the five, necessarily go through this process of forming a 501(c)(3). Right now, they have individuals having a savings account or a checking account at the bank, and they're changing every six, because there are tax consequences to that. And this, even though they're carrying a low balance.
Yeah.
This, this group does not qualify for revolving, a town revolving fund unless it's a town agency.
That's correct. Think about the Hope, Peaceful Hope, Peaceful Cemetery, the Angel of Hope. Okay, the town gave them a license to build that park, and they did a, they raised the money, they did all those things, and it's very, very nice, they do a lot of work. But the town is not involved in any of it. We're not collecting money for the stones and putting it in a 43G account revolving fund, we're not doing any of that.
However, the senior center does manage a plot. The high school, dining, what do you call it, food service manages a plot. So there are town, there are, not to mention the citizens, but there are town agencies that are availing themselves of this.
Well, they can do that, that's an expenditure, they can, they can do that. But there's no reason to have the town as a whole as part of this thing. I mean, it's, these things come and go, they become popular, then interest drops off and they kind of fade away. That's the nature of these things. Remember the Fourth of July Committee, right? At first, it was talked about making them a town committee. You said, no, 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 they're a private group, they raised all the money, they did all those things for years. Then after a while, you know, attendance drops off, and they hadn't had it for a number of years. Five or 10 years from now, people are going to say, hey, remember the great Fourth of July celebrations we had? Yeah, yeah, let's do it again, it'll start up again. That's how those things go. The First Night Committee, all the things that they do. It's not a town organization, but they do a lot of things. They put on that First Night Celebration, and they work all year doing it. I just, for the sake of not having, there's not a lot of work to file a 501(c)(3) organization. And certainly, there are people in that group that can do it very easily. Then you have no worries, they can do whatever they want, and it's no problem. That's, that's just my opinion. I'm not interested in growing the town government.
I don't know why they don't do a 501(c)(3) either.
They're considering it, they're just not sure about it at this point.
They do know that if they, if it goes out, the fees that are in there go to the general fund. They don't get them. If it's a revolving account, the fees, if it no longer, goes on, they don't get the money, goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
Is there any hold harmless clause that if somebody got hurt up there or?
Yeah, they sign, they sign.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, amendment to chapter 277, the Oxford General Bylaws Prompt Removal of Utility Poles. Now, I don't know what the genesis of this article is. This, this appears to add a current. Now, I don't know what the genesis of this article is. This, this appears to add a current, um, uh, mass code, not, not a, not a general law, but mass regulation to our bylaws. So, this, this language is already in the state regulations. The problem is that there is no enforcement mechanism really attached to it. The proposed law, state law, would be more strict, and it would impose penalties upon the utilities if they don't remove the polls in their timely manner, and they will be required to report to the town how many polls, double polls there are, and how long they've been there. So, they will have an obligation to provide us with that information. That bill is before one of the committees and reported out by one of the committees. My guess is that the utilities will, uh, lobby against it, because naturally, it's not something that they would want. However, if we try to get our reps to push for the state law, hopefully, the utilities, even though they may be successful in stopping its enactment, will get on the ball and start doing some of the work, which is my objective, to get rid of the double polls.
Why don't we?
But adding this as a local bylaw doesn't make any sense.
Why don't we add a fee of, uh, for every poll, every double poll, an extra fee and charge them? And they can pay an, an extra tax to the town.
But we don't have that authority.
The last sentence, it does. It's a hundred dollars a day per poll.
It is? I'll vote for it.
Um, I don't think they can do that.
Why not?
Well, because we, we only have.
Could they deny service? Are we gonna run electric in here anymore?
Down, down, cut off, trees down.
That's it.
Take the pole out. Yeah, right. And one of the other things, you know, they always go by last one on owns the pole. So, National Grid goes up, and then Verizon goes up, last one on owns it. Believe me, I've been trying to get polls down.
Yeah.
They're, uh, and it's all the cable company's fault, right? They can't seem to coordinate.
Thank God you're on the commission now.
The problem is that there's no incentive for the cable company or the telephone company to do the work to move the wires. Because it was a power company that needs the higher height for their purposes.
And they don't care about the rest of it.
The phone company is happy with what's there. The cable company is happy with, with what's there. So, there needs to be some external force applied. The proposed state regulations will provide that.
So, you want to remove this and?
I would like the board to send a letter.
Yep.
That happened. I did.
Okay.
I sent that the week after you asked me to.
Okay. And ask them, please do something about this.
Absolutely did.
Okay. I didn't see that in the file.
So, if my cable bill goes down.
I'm sorry, I'll make sure to forward.
Oh, okay.
Because they're just gonna charge us more.
Pole removing fee. Two dollars a month.
Well, you ought to get a bill from the sewer department or water department and see the fees. I think I've mentioned that once or twice before.
I've heard you talk about that.
I was on vacation, I think, Peter, when you all talked about that.
Oh, okay.
So, the week I came back, I wrote, Tracy said they wanted me, you wanted me to send a letter, and I did.
Now, are you aware of the, um, exempting municipal facilities from the, from the fees? Of what that does to an enterprise account?
I don't know how many explain, but you.
The, the, water department and the sewer department operate on their enterprises. They're, they're, they're much similar, very similar to a business entity. They charge fees in order to cover their current expenses and capital expenses and so on and so forth, the maintenance, repairs, and, and whatnot. Now, this requires them to provide services to the town for which they are not, to town facilities if they're not compensated for. That means that their rates are gonna have to go up. So, I don't know what the objective is. The town.
Wouldn't the town then have to charge the enterprise fund for things that, that the town provides back to the enterprise fund?
It depends on what it is. And for, for instance, the, the town provides a benefit to the, uh, water sewer users by virtue of borrowing money on the general obligation bonds, which allows them to borrow money at a significantly lower rate of interest.
And a lot more of it.
Yes. So, that's a benefit to them.
To who?
To the rate users.
The rate users.
Ratepayers.
Who pays it back? The rate users.
Yeah, but you'd never get the loan if you were standalone.
But you pay it back in a lower interest.
Then maybe we should charge the whole town.
Wait a minute. We're giving you a benefit.
You guys ain't giving us no benefits. I tell ya. Don't give me that loan, man.
There's no, there's no way that, that.
He's whining because he had to replace a pump in his well after three years. Right?
What?
You were, at the sewer meeting, you were complaining that you had to replace.
It wasn't a complaint. It's a statement of fact. You got hit by lightning and it had to be replaced.
Have you seen a bill from the water department for a user? Unbelievable.
Have you seen one?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. I see them. I see them.
Uh-huh.
And when my septic tank is pumped, I pay a fee.
How much?
Um.
Four hundred?
Three to four hundred dollars. Yeah, but that, that's, no, no. What I'm saying is, the, the sewer department charges a septic hall to dump there.
Oh, because you're running like a business, Peter.
Sure, absolutely. I'm not the planning, and the, the sewer department, Ben will tell you, they make money on that.
Right.
It's a good profit sent to far there, which is fine. There's a both big profit.
Who built it?
You mean who built it?
The taxpayers.
That's right.
Right? Oh, no, it was the ratepayers.
It was free. When it was originally built, it was free.
That one was free. Nice, man, twice.
But, but Peter, I, I agree with your point, which is that the borrowing capacity that that department has as an enterprise fund would not nearly be what it is without the town standing behind it.
That's correct. And the other thing is, how do you allocate the cost? Now, the, the issue is, if, if the school was paid for that pickup for the sewer charge, that would mean we'd have to put money in the school budget, right? All of us pay through our, everybody in the town of Oxford's pays money that goes into the school budget. The general taxpayer is gonna pay that as well as the people who are on the, on the rate, but not just the people on the rate. All the taxpayers are gonna pay that fee, including me, including you, because that's the general cost of running a school.
And that's what you want to do, is participate.
That's what we would do anyway. That's what we would do anyway.
I, I just, you know, we, for years, we charged, the, the water department charged the fire department for the rental of the hydrants. You know, and it just seemed ludicrous. We were taking it from the water department and putting it over here.
It's an allocation of cost. If you have an enterprise, at any business, I wanna know what.
It's a government.
It doesn't make any difference. I don't care.
If we're gonna start running a business, we're gonna wind up like.
The Red Cross, I wanna know what it costs to train people. I wanna know what it costs to house people. I wanna know what it costs to provide emergency aid to various things. I wanna know what things cost. If I don't know what things cost, how can I possibly manage anything?
Don't worry. We'll send you a tax bill.
Hey, great.
Small one. Back and forth with this forever. Be here all night.
Well, at some point, you have to resolve it.
Oh, I know, but.
We, we, we wear two hats here, Peter. We are water and sewer commissioners, and we have to act for the benefit of the people on the system.
Oh, I, I understand you, but you're going back and forth right now like, we're not gonna solve it right here.
Where are we gonna solve it?
Wouldn't you turn it on revolving account for, on some, on one of these articles there to start off?
That is a revolving account. And, I'm sorry, enterprise fund. Enterprise fund. It's similar to revolving.
Do we get any reports on the enterprise account? Do we?
Sure.
Yeah. I'm new to this, because, you know, I thought we were getting reports from the finance every month, but that's, uh.
No, no, no. You have to, you can get it anytime you want on the computer.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a bad subject, Tim, huh?
That's another meeting we'll hold off on now.
But Peter, to your point, it's gotta be all or nothing, and you've gotta be able to put a value on the borrowing, uh, capacity that the, the town allows those enterprise accounts to leverage. And that's the toughest thing, I think, to do, because it's not a hard number.
Well, it really, it really.
It fluctuates with prime rates, right?
But we can put a value on each borrowing, because you just compare enterprise fund rates generally with the rate we're borrowing.
If they can even do the same capacity, though. The enterprise fund doesn't collect enough revenue to go out and borrow thirty million dollars.
Well, I'd like to know, are they cutting down their expenses? You know, like, do they give the all cars and whatnot, trucks to take home every night? What are they doing to reduce their expenses in order to stay within the amount of money that they bring in?
At the individual budget level, that's a question.
We'd have to look at the, the contracts and see what they handed out.
Yeah, absolutely. Remember a town meeting, we spent a hundred twenty thousand dollars for that, uh, water truck, the panel truck? And I asked a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a panel truck? It's a box truck?
It is a nice truck.
Yeah, I know. It's a hundred twenty thousand dollars nice. I don't know. But yes, all that stuff is available. Have you read the management report, the audit report?
No, as a matter of fact, I have a note here. I was gonna come down tomorrow and see you and ask you if I could see.
On this particular one, I didn't, I don't think we need this.
Need what?
Are we talking about this?
Which one now?
The water and, uh.
Amendment to chapter two thirty-three?
Two thirty-three, seven.
Oh, okay. Wrong, no idea.
You threw me off here a little bit.
Now, where you going now? Three eighty-seven?
No, no, two.
Okay, you're up on the sewer privilege. I'm, I thought we were on the, uh, the municipal change on the water.
Yeah. That's amendment chapter two eighty-nine of the Oxford's General Bylaws.
Yeah, no, I thought we were down on two thirty-three, which is the water. The same.
Okay, the next one.
Yeah, but as gas and water, I mean sewer and water commissioners, we have the ability to waive municipal activities.
Abate.
Abate, I should say, municipal activities.
But why, I don't think we should.
Oh, no, I'm, but I'm saying.
Because we're depriving the enterprise fund of that revenue.
But I would disagree with you in that last abatement. Had you abated it, you would've charged enterprise users more, because no municipal buildings ever contributed a cent.
That's right.
To, to that pool of money that they're using for these connection fees. And then you would've had to split that pool of money that was collected, never contributed by anyone but one unit at the end across all municipal buildings, not just.
No, no, we, we didn't have those hookup fees until fairly recently.
But there's, there's always been a privilege fee prior to that, and there's a pool of money that's been collected over the course of time.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a long discussion, but, but the problem is, uh, on how you apply that money towards the debt that you're gonna borrow. If you're gonna say everyone's contributed now to the collected money, then you, you spread the debt evenly across everyone who's, who's part of that contribution pool. If you've only invited municipal in the last minute to contribute, then for all the people that contributed before, the municipal group became part of it, you're diluting their dollar value for their contribution. And if you do the math out, they would've ended up paying more in the end for this particular.
These things count in and out all the time. There's a, I go, we vote for some thing at the water department, and then I move. You know, I don't get my money back, so I'm not getting the benefit of that. I paid it, I paid it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, we, we can't, we can't make everybody hold to the penny.
Right. Like on a capital improvement. You wanna put three million dollars in there, I may never live to see what you use it for.
That's correct.
But I gotta pay the tax for it, and they're not gonna give it back to me.
That's correct. But you're only gonna pay the tax while you're living.
Living here.
Using the warrant. When you're dead, you don't have to pay that tax anymore, because you're not using it anymore.
I'm not using the building you built either.
That's correct. That's right. I mean, that's, that's how the Mercedes Benz.
All right, let's move on.
What do we end up with?
Yeah, good talk.
Good talk, yeah.
Good conversation.
Um. I mean, we, I'm looking for consideration here, because what we're, what's gonna happen is in two weeks, we're gonna give you an updated version of the, this, so I've knocked, I mean, if some of these you don't wanna see on eight twenty-seven, you need to let, let me know.
Well, I, my thought was that cause of where the commissioner is, whether it's municipal, commercial, residential, we can abate. Here, we're definitely, we're throwing it out, but we have the ability to change, you know, to abate municipal powers.
There has to be, we can't really, really nearly say, gee, you know, Peter, I like you. You don't have to pay your water bill. You don't have to pay this fee. We can't do that anymore than we can say.
We could do a policy on this.
You don't have to pay your property taxes, because you're a nice fellow.
We're policy makers.
Can't do those things.
We could put a policy on this as the commissioners, like if that school, you know, uh, in Linwood, uh, North Oxford's, if we maintained it on government property, but they rented it, then we could charge them some sort of an assessment on that too. But where it's gonna be straight municipal, then I, I think that that's where we could probably waive the fee.
I mean, I, 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 same thing with the building permits. They can have a policy up there to waive a building permit for any municipality that, that's a salt shed, a D P W garage.
There, there, there's a reason for that, and the ra, a rationale for that. The rationale for that is that what we pay the, the, uh, the vendor, the contractor, is all the expenses and the profits and the taxes and everything, and the fees. So, if, if we say we're gonna charge you two thousand dollars for inspection fees for the high school, they raise their bid by two thousand dollars. So, we're not waiving anything.
And high school pays it.
Yeah.
If there's no fee, there's no fee to pay.
That's right. So, there's no, there's no gain or loss in that case. If you look at those contracts, the contracts are based on, based on certain assumptions. And it doesn't include, does not include costs of permit fees and so on and so forth. Those are extras.
Well, some of those billing permit fees, that, well, the last one waived, is it BJ's?
Yeah.
A lot of money.
That one's a big building.
I, I have an excavator in the back home. When I run the excavator, I charge myself forty dollars an hour, and I put that money aside, because I know things break, and believe me, boy, they break. So, it's all my money, but I need to know what things cost. If I don't know what things cost, how can anyone make a good management or financial decision?
When you do commercial billing, you're gonna put, your fee goes. He'll set upstairs two thousand, two hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Permit fee. That's what it is.
Yeah.
Contractor's gonna charge that.
That's correct.
If there's no number there, contractor's not gonna charge it, so you're gonna save that money. The town's gonna save that money. One of the municipalities now.
That's correct, because we're gonna pay the extra money.
Well, that's why I'm saying policy takes care of it. Why can't we have a policy in the sewer and water commissioners?
Because of the, it's an enterprise fund. The money goes to the enterprise fund, not to the general fund.
Under the town.
Okay.
That's the difference. And I think the finance committee, forget finance.
Peter's paying himself his own money. We're not paying.
Right.
It's not the, it's not our money. It's, with that money we're paying is actually going to, because those, they're comp, comp, companies, they're corporations on them, of themselves.
The treasurer, bad treasurer should, should give us an explanation of this and the effect it's gonna have on the operation of the water and sewer department, and Ben should do the same thing.
I, my, my own point is you gotta be all in. You, you can't pick and choose.
That's exactly right.
And, and so it has to swing on bo, uh, both ways.
This is not our, um, slush fund, you know, to say.
But to the end, it's Ben picking and choosing.
I don't think so. We've, since those fees were established, we've applied them uniformly as far as I'm aware. And when, when, when we charged Summerfield, they came to the board. You were here.
They came to the board.
And they made a case for an abatement, because they paid for the line and so on and so forth, and the board considered it, and Ben gave us an explanation, and we said, no, we're sorry, you owe the money.
But Somerville wasn't, Summerfield wasn't also borrowing money against the general.
No, no, I, I know that. That, that is separate thing. But if I was, if I was owning Summerfield, I'd, I'd be down here right away with a suit against a, hey, you know, I want my money back.
They would have, they would have no, no leg to stand on, though.
Oh, yes, they have.
It's the builder's decision. The b, builder decided, I'm gonna put sewer in instead of going with private septic.
They didn't have to.
And unless they surprised all those people later, after they, you know, signed a purchase and sale and said, hey, I switched out your septic to a sewer fee, now I'm jacking your price.
The builder, the builder would say to the town, their claim would be that the enterprise fund in the sewer department tra, treated its customers differently to my detriment. I was required to pay something that other customers. I was required to pay something that other customers, and other, another customer, a favorite customer, was allowed not to have to pay.
Like a municipality, he's a nonprofit.
Well, that's easy to prove.
Go ahead.
Here's the vote. Judge, here's the vote of the Board of Selectmen.
No, but how, how is it a detriment? Prove that it's a detriment.
Because they were made to pay, they made, paid several hundred thousand dollars. Judge, we paid the money. Hey, listen, another customer, they said, hey, you don't have to pay, we like you.
That's, that's not true. The detriment, you're, you're saying that the, that they lost money because we abated it for the other municipality, the municipal building, the school. That's the point you have to prove.
Couple hundred thousand dollars was a pretty good hit.
You don't have to prove you lost money, you only have to show that you suffered a loss in that you were required to pay, and in fact, did pay, this amount of money. Whereas another customer, who would, under your old rules, had been required to pay this amount of money, was told, you don't have to pay. Well.
We'll do the math some other time.
I'm not interested in the math.
We'll have a meeting on Saturday, because we got a little more time.
Do these are staying?
Does it stay? Yes.
I also don't understand the transfer and control of pulp ponds article.
This is just something that you had talked about earlier. We just kinda tossed this on, and we don't know that you can actually do it, uh, but.
Well, they've, they've done it in the past. It's, pulp ponds always been under the control of the Conservation Commission. And I don't see why it should change. I think it's.
But it was an appropriation, it wasn't, you didn't actually transfer. If you look at that comment at the end, that, the article, when it happened, didn't transfer property, it gave an appropriation and authorized the commission to purchase the property, so we're not sure that you could actually undo.
And it's not a deed, it's not deeded as conservation land.
Past practices, it's all right. Past practices.
I'm not, listen, I'm not arguing that we take it away from the Conservation Commission, that's fine, as long as, I mean, we, I'm assuming, someday I'm gonna have a reasonable Conservation Commission. But my point is, we have a house lot with water and sewer.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to do something.
We tried that when you, when your friend was on the Board of Selectmen and nothing ever transpired.
That's correct, the board refused it to do it.
He kicked the guy out.
And it stayed empty.
Hunting and fishing.
And it stayed empty.
And it stayed empty, so.
And what?
Next chapter.
Why is it that there's this, you just can't come to a decision on something?
Right.
I don't understand it. I mean, this.
Well, decisions are reached when two parties compromise and work together. And that's when you reach decisions and things move along.
Yeah.
Like Congress, right?
Yeah.
So.
But it's not a question of two parties, things are done by majority vote.
Oh, all right, then, then let's keep going then. We'll go with the majority vote.
But you can only do that if you take a vote.
I know, but I thought we were just discussing.
Yeah, we, are we supposed to vote in discussion?
Discussion on
Okay.
What happened, are they either gonna take him out? There's nothing on these, I mean, they're awesome.
What's the, what's the deadline for our voting on the articles?
Article, well, we're gonna, we'll vote on the motion to close it, to close the warrant on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
The idea here would be to entertain these, consider these potential articles. Whatever comes up in the next couple of weeks, I have, most of my department heads, most of this town stuff is just about done. I'm gonna have a couple of stragglers, though. And then, so an amended or final town sort of version would be in two, two weeks.
Yeah, the twenty-seventh, we're supposed to have.
And then anything that would happen after that, wouldn't your theory come from residents?
Okay, but that's coming up quickly.
It is.
Two weeks, next meeting.
Yeah.
So. We'll vote on these.
Fourteen days.
So really, it's, like we just said, we're keeping the municipalities in, like, we can.
Told me we're removing one, so you don't wanna, that you.
Say that again, Sean?
Say again?
I didn't hear what you said.
So far, you told me that you, we don't need to put on the warrants the article concerning the utility pools.
No, I don't think we don't. That's already in the.
It's already.
That's the same covered by law.
And that comes under the Department of Public Utilities.
So that's off.
Yeah, all in Las Vegas, spending some money.
There's been a lot of discussion on the next two, but there hasn't been any.
Which one's that?
You don't ultimately have to vote on, I guess it's consideration, but you can knock stuff off now if you want.
No, no, no.
This is gonna pare the list down for next two, next time.
It would be helpful if we saw all the articles as they come in, rather than bunching them and giving them to us at one time. That way, we have more time to think about them.
Well, we got two weeks to look this over, right? And you said you're gonna have some more coming in, yet this is.
There's gonna be a couple of stragglers, I think, in the town, yeah, but. I know at least one.
So the recommendation now is just to leave, besides the one we eighty-sixed off the list, leave these on for further consideration in the next meeting.
Okay.
Will be definitive.
Okay.
And we have to get these out, I think, October, or end of September, the FinCon.
We get, as soon as something comes in, we should send it to the.
Finance committee, yep.
Okay, it doesn't have to, you know, you can say that this has been submitted, we haven't voted yet on it, but let them know. The more time you give them to weigh something, the better, the better for everybody.
Absolutely, I agree with it, and they need it too, they need the time to discuss it. Are they, is the garden, community, community garden, are they looking at that, or they, they don't know what they're gonna do, five oh one C, or they're gonna do the?
They would accept this if we, I mean, because I don't think they're just not sure. I mean, if, in the end, if they went five oh one C three, we just, you know, we can undo this.
Right.
This is easily undone.
Pass it over.
If it's not the will of the board, it's not the will of the board, then it'll, it forces their hand, I suppose.
They do know how that revolving fund works.
They do. And one of the reasons I think they also like the idea of being a town agency is although I have extended them temporarily space on the website or all that, if this didn't happen in November, that would sort of all end, and I think it helps them, they, they view the website and the town as a resource, and quite frankly, they have voluntarily actually, since you brought it up, have been complying with all these open meeting laws and, and posting agenda, they've been operating as though.
It's not so easy, because if we set up a forty-three G, not forty, what, forty-three G, the revolving fund.
Fifty-three.
There's money in there, and then they decide to form their own rules. We can't transfer that money to them, there's a constitution, there's an anti-abuse provision.
No, but they could spend it and then do what they're gonna do, so.
As long as they know it.
No, there wouldn't be wasting it, exactly, right, yeah. The reality is, this group isn't gonna, they're not gonna have a tremendous amount of operating capital. They need to have a place to put in the money that they're gonna get before, so they can then pull onto it for a short period of time before spend, spending it, so.
But there are hundreds of organizations that do that every day of the week.
I, this is, and I think it's part of the, again, whether it's faddish or whatever, I think it's part of that community, it's a community garden, and I think that word "community", and they, they view that inclusion in the town, under the umbrella that the town provides, as part of that word "community", as an, an inclusion of everyone in town. While we all know it's not an exclusive group and it includes everyone anyways, it gives it the group maybe an extra sense of credit, credibility or whatever, if you will. I can't speak for the group.
Behind the congregation or church, there's a community house. It's called Community House. It's used by the community, but it has nothing to do with the government of the town.
Let's go into minute meetings. I think we'll go, next meeting, we'll just go through those, we only got rid of one, so.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of keeping the pulp pond one on there, just for record.
We'll be voting.
I think you're gonna be able to do it.
No.
I think we make a motion that we buy a coffee pot. Does that thing work at all? Does it work at night?
Does what work?
We got petty cash.
Coffee pot.
No coffee pot?
No, we don't drink coffee. Oh, downstairs, there's one. Free to make a pot.
Yeah, but I can't leave it. Meeting minutes.
Maybe I should.
Seven, nine, twelve.
Which ones are you doing?
Seven, nine, twelve.
Call to order, under B, Citizens Forum, a resident addresses concerns. Who was a resident? Now, I noticed that recently, the board asked people to sign.
Right.
Sign up.
Sign in, yeah.
I don't know why we do that, but if I look at this, here, resident addresses concerns with the board, waiving whatever.
Mark Stacey.
Okay, shouldn't we say Mark Stacey?
I think, I don't think.
Because then you might wanna call Mark and say, hey, Mark, tell me more about this, you know?
Yep.
The whole idea of minutes is to, it is the same number of words, Mark Stacey versus resident addresses.
I don't see any problem with that. No, I thought those names were recorded at some point in time.
As the clerk, as the clerk, I think you would oversee the governing of these minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, the level of detail in meeting minutes is open to interpretation, so.
We've got TV, we've got minutes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's.
Don't run off with that. It's filed.
Motion to approve.
Uh, just a couple of things. On the town manager's update, I'm going down this list. Blanted roof, leak, and, what's the status of the leak? Has it been found, fixed?
Yeah, we found it. We had the fire department run water, high pressure.
Okay. SEIU dispatch, that's all it says. That doesn't tell me anything. What was, what was that? I forgot. We're hiring more people?
No, I spoke of the contract modifications we made to the SEIU contract just for dispatchers.
Okay, again, it'd be helpful with just a little thing so that we know what it was. Sutton Street entranceway cleanup, is that something that was done or something that's gonna be done in the future?
I asked if community gardens could have permission to clean it up.
Okay.
To remove vegetation that was obstructed into view.
Okay, okay.
Was it granted?
It was granted and it was accomplished.
I wasn't here that day.
Sorry.
Okay.
Were you absent or me, Peter, on that meeting? Says not present Jay.
Yeah.
Might be you.
In terms of looking at this.
Right.
You know, six months from now, you think, gee, I wonder what the heck that was.
Right.
And under member issues, it says, and writes dairy farm. So the issue is, if I remember right, was really about the, you know, the use of the Hundred Acre Lot.
Grow wheat.
You know, or something.
It was to grow wheat, I think.
It just writes dairy farm, doesn't tell us anything.
So we don't necessarily wanna amend these, just in general, you'd like to see more detail from Tracy's meeting minutes?
Yeah, we're appropriate. I don't want, I don't want long minutes. The other thing is, and I've been saying this for years and years and years. The minute should be done the first thing the morning after the meeting, because if they're not, we're approving something that happened, this was July ninth, okay, more than a month ago.
I don't think we've met since then.
I know that, but if we, if we had the minutes, if they were sent email to us, and it's fresh in your mind, you can make comments. You can't make, there was a time when the Board of Selectmen went two years without approving minutes. Two years!
We used to always have the minutes written the next morning. That was the first thing. That's legit.
Well, she sends them out. I mean, how long does it usually take? It's usually only a day or two before she sends them out after the meeting.
No.
Isn't?
No, no, no.
Does she wait?
We don't get them.
Okay.
It should be the first go out of a business, unless the building's on fire.
I'll work on it.
We'll provide a smoke, one of those smoke masks.
She can use that desk.
We all said with seven, nine, no. Jay, you made a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, approve the minutes of July ninth. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, seven eighteen?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from seven eighteen, two thousand twelve suspended. This was the school building meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Second. What's been made in seconded, except the minutes of seven eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm staying.
Seven nineteen?
I don't think, if I remember correctly, under state law, when the board goes on a site visit, that's not a meeting.
That's right, as long as you don't take a vote.
That's correct, so we don't have to have minutes for it.
He called a meeting, though.
We did post it.
Okay, I mean, just for future reference, we don't have, it's not a meeting.
You did open it and not in a sense?
But it's here as a site visit.
And obtain information.
The important thing is not.
It's just like, I didn't go.
Yeah, I know.
So I took a vote, it's not a.
Technically, you only have to document, hold it.
Yeah, I don't know if I called a meeting.
That's right.
I just, I think we just asked everybody if they wanted to go. I don't think, I wasn't even there, I didn't get there.
I'm just trying to loosen your work.
I don't think I called a meeting. I think we just, I asked everybody who couldn't make it.
It was posted.
It was posted.
So I guess we should.
I didn't open the meeting, I didn't formally open the meeting when we were there, so I don't.
So the vote on that was three to two, three zero two.
I abstained.
Two, no, Peter did two, because he wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
I was there.
How was that? Three zero two, okay, got it.
All right, town manager's update.
Did you do seven nineteen minutes? No?
Done.
Done.
It's all done.
I didn't get that vote. What the hell, what the hell was I?
Four oh one.
Four oh one, thank you.
You're looking for that coffee pot.
Seven nineteen? It should have been three oh two.
Oh.
Nineteen was the sewer plant.
Meeting.
Got you.
Should have had three oh two. Should put that as a criteria on the town manager evaluation, can keep up with the meeting.
All right, so in general, the last three weeks have been really meeting heavy. I think the first thing that really, that I bit off was interviewing and hiring a conservation administrator. Probably got about twenty-five, twenty-eight resumes, applications. I think I got twenty-nine, twenty-seven of them were worth considering, actually. A lot of people with a lot of experience. I interviewed nine folks. I've just about come to an agreement with, with the person I would like to hire, her name is Jennifer Steele. She's currently a part-time conservation administrator in the town of Wayland. She's been a conservation administrator since nineteen ninety-five. She's got lots of experience. So not only will she be able to assist the Conservation Commission in its conduct of its meetings, but just, she's a Wetlands Protection Act expert. She's got years and years of experience conducting site, site visits. And she'll also be assistive in potential legislation that the town's gonna wanna think about writing in terms of maybe, if we ever look towards writing a Wetlands Protection Act and stormwater, those are areas that at some point, you know, I don't, the, the town certainly doesn't need to necessarily have to entertain a Wetlands Protection Act bylaw, but stormwater is definitely something that's gonna have to come, that the town is gonna have to deal with, otherwise, it's gonna start costing us some money. So at some point, we're gonna have to come up with some language in that area that's gonna, that's gonna appeal to the town, otherwise.
Do we have anything in place right now?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any, anything in place?
There's no stormwater bylaw. I mean, we have a plan, the DPW has a plan, but no one. It's not. The bylaw that was, a bylaw was attempted at, in November, and it failed.
But that by, that had no meaning in it.
And I'm not disagreeing with you.
It said.
It said, we need a combination of a bylaw, whatever, a bylaw that addresses something, that means something, education of the public. So, and at any rate, this Conservation Administrator will certainly be assistive in that area. What else? As you can see, the heavy equipment is still out in the front in the parking lot there. Our gentlemen from Build Max are still, still working on the pointing. It's just about done. We did have to order a couple of new signs for the front, so that, that large sign hanging over the steps that had the Uxproach Town seal on at the town hall. We did have to order a couple of new signs for the front, so that, that large sign hanging over the steps that had the Uxbridge Town seal on at the town hall, we had it, we, we, we got a new all-weather sign. And also, the small sign that was on a corner to the right of the entrance that the built-in, and that mentioned the architect's name, we replaced that as well.
You didn't take that sign down, it used to say jail, and you went down.
Jail sign is still there, and the problem with that is it's, we were hoping to maybe replace it or repaint it, it's a really thick, heavy piece of wood, the thing looks, it probably weighs fifty pounds, so that would cost us, whatever, it's not a priority in the budget right now.
What about that small roof, Sean, did they take the plant out of the gutter there?
Yeah, that's another, the roof over the, over the, that's gonna get fixed, yeah, the one that sprouted a tree.
Yeah, you got a tree.
One of the problems has been, the icicles have actually fallen down from the actual roof in the top and have pierced that sort of small roof over the steps. So the plan is for the Build Max gentleman to pull, pull that off, replace it, and put some cement barriers on the roof there that will actually catch icicles.
The icicles form because heat is escaping from the roof.
Which is not, I don't know that that's, that's a problem, we can, heat escaping, heat escapes all over from this building.
Yeah, I know that, but it, it, it does it in that one constant, few concentrated areas, and that's why you got these giant icicles, I mean, last year, some of them were enormous.
We're certainly, and I too, looking towards a more comprehensive solution, but this is certainly a, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
So, there's no getting around it, that short, that small roof there needs to be replaced, or, cause it's, it's rotten, it's, it's gone.
You know, one time, there was a, they were working on that roof, and that noon whistle blow, and we almost lost somebody there.
Almost losing me every day, and I just sit in the office.
You just walk it down the street.
Yeah, I know what.
And if it was me, I'd unplug that thing, you know, my windows are open in the back there, I jump out of my skin nearly every day. So we, the, we have, we published the RFP for the sale slash lease, potential slash lease of Blanchard School, there's a site visit scheduled, I think, twenty-first of this month, and the actual, the RFP closes on the twentieth of next month. So we'll see if we get any response on that. The work on the garage next to the senior center, the, sorry, Peter, the downtown revitalization project, was it you that took offense to that term?
Um, well.
Some, some member of this board didn't like that.
What it means is that it's, it's the death knell of any town that's revitalized, of any town that has that.
The affectionately termed downtown revitalization, I think they're supposed to start like the sixteenth, I believe, the remediation, hazardous material remediation, we've already gone forward, we've sort of given conservation the heads up that the demolition is gonna be coming, so we're trying to engage conservation, we'd really like to get that demolished, and hopefully.
Why is conservation involved in it?
Right next to the water, right next to the river.
River act. Oh, okay.
On the other side of the tracks.
If at all possible, we'd like to get this paved thi- this year, we'd, we'd like to get the building down and get the parking lot paved, so we're on potentially tight schedule, but, what else? We talked about the ribbon cutting ceremony, I've, I've gone to all the construction meetings on Wednesdays for the last month, bit of a time suck, four, four and a half hours, but it tends to be time well spent, I've actually been able to sort of inject, I've, I've been able to sort of help in the conversations, I'm glad I didn't go for the last six or seven months, but I'm also glad that I've gone now that the project is, you know, winding down. It's just been good, is I feel it's, it's, it's good for you all to know that, that first of all, just sort of what, echo what Bruce was saying, you know, the superintendents that Shawmet has there are really driving those subs hard, like, they're, they're really pushing for quality of work, and our folks are, what do you call them? Jocelyn Lesser, our project man, OPM, David Krevitz, he's really, at these meetings, he's really, really advocating for stretching this money, like, making sure stuff gets done, but making sure it gets done as effectively, as efficiently, and as cheaply as possible, without sac- sacrificing quality, so it's, it's good to see all these people at the table together, it's sometimes sort of at odds, at seeming odds, but in the end, you can sort, sort of tell, at the end of the day, everybody wants to get this done, Shawmet's concerned, concerned about its reputation as the GC, and Jocelyn Lesser's doing its best to make sure our money goes as far, far as it possibly can.
Who was it, Josh?
Jocelyn Lesser Associates, they're our owner's project manager.
Been a good team effort.
Yeah, they were a good group.
What else, superintendent, the new superintendent, Kevin Carney, he and I have met quite a few times, it's part of his integration program, he's, the last couple of Wednesdays culminating with this Wednesday, he's had coffee with the superintendent at the Taft School, and I've actually gone and attended those with him, and he's also having an evening meeting this Thursday, it's pizza and salad with the superintendent, he's trying to catch those parents and folks that aren't able to come during, during the day. Sort of no secret in this town that there are times where there's, there's a perception out there that the town and the school are sort of two separate entities, and that there may be some animosity between the two, he and I are really trying to work together to sort of repair, if there's any rift to repair, but more than, more than actual repairing any actual damages, to put the, improve the public's perception, because the school is part of the town, and, and it's an important, important part, right, and so, we both sort of feel it's sort of valuable to exhibit sort of a team, team approach, rather than it's just them and us. Because it's easy to get down, go down that road when, with the revenue share agreement, and, you know, the school does take up a large amount of our tax dollars, but it is what it is, and so.
Yeah, that, that's inevitable by virtue of the legislature that split the towns in half.
Right, it is.
We don't have a choice.
It goes different from any, any other town.
And I'm not saying it is, but we can do what we can.
Yeah.
On a, on an actual, on an individual.
Much better now than it was years ago.
Certainly, and I'm, yeah, and I don't have a lot of experience, obviously, in this town seeing that, but we're just trying to do, do whatever we can to sort of show united front, and to that end, we're just trying to sort of help each other out when we can publicly. Uh, what else?
He's doing a, he's doing a good job, he's got an open door, if you need, if you wanna talk to him, he's willing to talk.
Most of the announcements were pretty much done, one general announcement, National Grid, their continuing effort for the Interstate Reliability Project, they're having a public hearing tomorrow night at the senior center.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
I think it's tomorrow, yeah. Yeah, I have it on the fourteenth, but, and the last thing I think you all should probably know about is the developments, or lack of developments, I guess, in terms of replacing our police chief, who is retiring. His last day of actual employment with the town is the twenty-fourth of this month, Friday the twenty-fourth, we are having an open house, I think you mentioned it early on, on the twenty, twenty-second, it'd be helpful, you all have a meeting at six, six o'clock with the school building committee.
Right.
Which I will miss, because I'm sort of, I'm sort of hosting this reception for Chief Freitas, it'd be nice if you could, if you had a few minutes to swing by and offer your condolences, or whatever it is you do for someone who's retired from the town, but we found out that in nineteen fifty-four, the town adopted civil service by a ballot. What the town taketh or adopteth by ballot, the town must divest itself of by ballot, so, it's not gonna be as simple as a town meeting question, it took us some digging to figure out when and where it actually happened. How this affects us.
Peter, were you on the board then?
John Henry.
First term. The conduct, so we are stuck with civil service, if you wanna say, we are gonna continue the civil service as it exists, without sort of interruption, at the very least, until another election could be had. Scheduling a special election for this, for this particular question, I don't know if it's worth the expense, no matter what road we turn down, it's expensive, unless we wait until the spring. Because, one of the things that I can do now, I can get, I can schedule a designated sole assessment center, and I could open up statewide, open competitive examination for the police chief in this town, it would probably cost us anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to conduct that. We don't have a choice, the state conducts the no-charge one every spring, happens in April or May, all right, so, we can do this, but it's gonna cost us a lot of money, we could try and push the town away from civil service, which would require a special election, if we don't wait till May, I'm talking of the, the accelerated options. Special election, we're looking at six or seven thousand probably anyways, minimum, so, in the interest of costs, it just seems to me as though we sort of try and take care of the two birds with one stone that I hope to do this fall, we won't really necessarily be able to take care of, in a finance, fiscally sound way, until the spring. At which point in time I can conduct the civil service assessment through the state, at no cost to the town, and we can also put the, put the, put it to the ballot. The problem with putting it to the ballot is, I've gotta sort of do a little bit of research on that, but this is where my lack of experience creeps in, it was put on the ballot because there were signatures, you know, there was a petition put, put around town, so I don't know if this is a question that the selectmen simply have the power to put on the ballot, or if this needs to be a grassroots effort again, and someone needs to actually circulate a petition to get this particular thing on the ballot in May.
Well, the secretary of state should be able to answer that question.
So, I'm just letting you know that the, the quick solution that we had sort of hoped for isn't, it can happen, it's just gonna cost us a ton of money, and I don't know, I don't think we have a void in leadership, I think we have an acting chief, and I think Chief Emrick would be, you know, certainly more than adequate for the next, you know, nine or ten, ten months, so.
What's your, what's your current plan?
I'm sort of looking, I am looking for your opinions, I, I wouldn't assume that we would wanna spend, if we're gonna spend the money on the assessment center, then clearly, we, we keep civil service, cause we're not gonna spend fifteen or twenty grand on an assessment center, and then have the town get rid of civil service in May, that would be absolutely silly.
Are you saying that if we hire a chief now, it has to be civil service?
Absolutely.
And.
We would have to conduct an assessment center that would cost us a lot of money.
For his tenure, it's gonna be civil service?
He has the usual one year, unless he.
Otherwise, if, if we hire someone and now is civil service, and then we elect out of civil service next spring, is he still grandfathered as civil service?
It would depend on the wording of the Warren article, we can sort of control that, we could make it a year, we could, yeah.
Okay.
He won't lose his civil service status, but his civil service status will have no application while he's in, in a department that has no civil service.
Okay.
Exactly, that's basically what it boils down to.
Okay.
Now, there's a Massachusetts Police Chiefs Association in Grafton, right up in Providence Road, just as you're going into, it'll be coming out of Grafton. I don't know, that's civil service, maybe they got some guys that are, maybe shot himself in the foot yet or something, you know, I mean, maybe they got a list of people who would be available.
Okay, and that's one thing I'll have to look into, I, I, the one thing that we do by looking, if we look at another department's list, is we have excluded the people that we have in our department now, which, while however your personal feelings are about that, I don't advise, that's not good PR, the last thing we want, I think, we definitely wanna give our current personnel the opportunity to compete for the job, whether or not they're the la, he or she's the last person standing.
If you look into all the complaints that we've had and whatnot, and they've come up shiny clean, that's fine, but if you've got a problem in that police department right now, and you're gonna perpetuate it.
Well, the leader of that department is retiring, and if that, if that problem has had anything to do with the leader, then the new leader has a chance to fix some of those problems.
I like to speak to the police officers, I don't believe that's the case.
This is one of the problems that you run into, and that I have to consider, you know, is. You can view this at, whatever, there's a possibility that, that the department, that, whatever, Chief Freitas leaves his stamp on the department, and Lieutenant Emrick believes a one-hundred percent in everything that Chief Freitas did, and now that Chief Freitas is gone, status quo, nothing changes, however, this is also an opportunity.
For him to shine.
For Lieutenant Emrick to, and for us to see if maybe he isn't a carbon copy of his predecessor, perhaps he does have his own ideas, perhaps he has been a good dutiful number two, and he has told the company line, and now that he's in the position of being able to effect some change as the number one person, perhaps his philosophy is completely different.
Or, it may be a case where he has the same philosophy, but applies it.
In a different way.
Different way, which leads to, you know, I don't know, it, it's, sometimes there's a predisposition against internal appointments, and sometimes there's a predisposition in favor of it, I mean, it's, people are people, they're all different. And many times, people had, Eisenhower appointed Earl Warren as Supreme Court judge, he thought he was gonna be a good conservative judge, turned out to be completely different, and that's not unusual.
I just, again, this is mostly just informative to you, I, I like the idea of using another resource, however, I don't like the idea of possibly alienating the people that we have on our, on our.
Well, you know, if this, if this individual has supposedly some stamina and capable of standing on his own feet, six months ago, he could've been doing something about these problems going on, because he had the rank, and he didn't do it.
He wasn't the chief.
Don't give me that baloney.
I'm just.
That's, that's.
Bullcrap.
You know, that's like saying, you know, when the Nazis were running the ovens for crying out loud, hey, I'm not the chief, you told me to put them in.
That's exactly what Eichmann said to Nuremberg, he said, who am I to judge, everybody else was doing it, my boss told me to do it, so I did it. That's exactly what subordinates do, many subordinates do, they act under the orders of their superior officers, however, when those subordinates become superiors themselves, they oftentimes act in a much different way.
Well, just have to wait and see.
I'm just aware of the, of the potential that that exists, that may exist.
I guess it also depends on his force.
True.
The men under him, if they treat him.
Yeah, and you, you don't know.
Right, you don't know.
That's right, that's right.
See how it works out.
What's your, what's your, what's your current plan, can you kind of like?
My current plan, fiscally, it's mostly, I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking the best case, the most fiscally prudent case. Is to wait until, to spring, to conduct both the assessment center, which, cause it won't cost us anything, and then we can, in the meantime, I can work to figure out if we wanna put civil service on the, on the ballot.
Is there any practice, like if he does this for ninety days, that you gotta bring in somebody else, and say, bring up Tim Burke to do the job, because if you keep him there over ninety days, can he assume that he's gonna get the appointment?
No, he would just be an interim appointment. No one is qua, under civil service, no one is qualified to have the permanent job until he or she is selected, through the exam purpose, so yeah, that's, we're protected from that. I don't wanna, believe me, this isn't what I would like, would wanna do, I don't necessarily want to drag it out, but I would hate to spend.
Twenty grand, go ahead.
And, you know, if no one, if I hadn't heard any suggestion, either from the board or citizens, about potentially turning away from civil service, I'd spend the money, conduct the assessment center, and let's just do it, we'll stick with civil, civil service, but if there is some doubt in the town, I feel as though we should let the town speak on it, and if that's the, what we're gonna do, then we need to wait on the assessment center, let's not spend the money now.
I think it's in the town's interest to get out of civil service, there's no benefit.
I don't disagree with you, but it's not our call.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Yeah.
I'm just speaking as a.
You two in agreement?
No, no.
You think we should stay in service?
Stay with civil service.
The, the officers, this will, basically, it'll just be removing the chief from the civil service, the officers will still be subject to civil service, there's no other promotional system.
You know, we did that before, and we had some real problems, and, you know, it should be civil service straight through.
Were the problems directly attributable to the fact that it wasn't the civil service?
It was, it was, goes back when John Emrick was chief.
Yeah.
And he was a weak chief.
Yeah.
All right, and then, when I got on the board, we had a little tussle, and they said, let's make him a strong chief that gets the board of selectmen out of the police department, we don't know police work, and we shouldn't be there, and you got the strong chief, and things went along smooth.
With the same person.
With the same person.
Okay, but strong chief doesn't necessarily mean civil service. But strong chief doesn't necessarily mean civil service.
It is, does to me.
Well.
Did beg then, but no.
Well.
They got a union, yeah.
In theory, we have a strong chief now, because you guys, the selection, you guys are removed via the charter, you're removed from that process anyways. This conversation is a courtesy, basically, right, you know what I mean? So in that sense, yeah, I mean, that this person is gonna, the, the chief is gonna be whoever I want the chief to be. I don't know police work either, so, that's, any, whatever, the town has to have some faith in me that I'm gonna hire a strong chief.
This charter does give you the right to investigate, and if you don't have the qualifications to do it, then you should get somebody else in and do it.
If I were to take.
Before you make a decision as to who's gonna, and it looks like some of the decisions have already been made, but I think you should just
No, I'm not hiring anybody, I, if.
To come in and look at it.
If we, if the town, it's not me, if the town decides to go away from civil service, the first thing we're gonna do is convene a panel of police chiefs from the state, I'm not gonna hire this guy alone, a guy or girl, this person. I have no intention, there's no decisions been made, other than I have an interim chief, that's it.
A lot if you had a trooper come in and go through that department, and find out what documents, if there are any documents missing, and see what's going on, and see how it's run. We don't pay.
Where are we gonna pay for, how are we gonna pay for that?
We're gonna pay a lot more if we don't do it right.
It sounds like you changed the subject on me a little bit, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure, just in terms of hiring the chief. Just in terms of hiring the chief, I, you make, I need to be clear, I haven't, I know the direction I'd like to go, I'm pluing you in on it, but no one's been hired. Problem is, is 'cause we haven't gone down that road, there's a question mark as to the direction the town wants to take, and I don't get to make that call. But rest assured, if the town gets, if, if, if it gets to a vote, and the town says we don't want civil service, at least for the chief's position anymore, it's not gonna be one on one with me and these people coming in, I'm gonna have a panel of experts. 'Cause I know, you're a hundred percent right, I don't have expertise in law enforcement, and I wouldn't ever presume to.
And let me tell you, the people hired by the quote experts have bad choices too.
Sometimes, 'cause they've got people that they know, they've got, they pre-judge, yeah, it's an imperfect uh sys- system, it absolutely is.
People I've hired, my choices, you know, have not proved to be stellar ones. But it never bothered me, because I can fire people, you see? I hire you, if you don't work out, I fire you.
And that's the advantage tend to going away from civil service, obviously.
I'll tell you also, if you, I'll send you down some notices that I get from civil service just about every week, who, people who do their homework, and then they file charges against a police officer, or a fireman, or any other civil service person, and it goes in front of the civil service, if they did their documentation correct, that officer is either gone, dismissed, or takes a leave for a month. So, you gotta know how to work the system, civil sys- civil service works. I've been, I was in it for twenty-seven years, and I know it works. I got rid of pharmacists, technicians, and everything else.
You can have your paperwork.
Disagree, although you do see a trend, there is a trend in municipal government moving away from it, absolutely, right or wrong, Tim, I'm not gonna.
Would deregulate and everything.
There's a trend, because
We want control over.
That's correct, they, they put impediments in the way of making decisions. And just that, that, the process that you have to go through provides friction, that, well, we'll, we'll keep the guy because it's a lot of trouble to, to get rid of him, and that's bad management.
So it seems to me the best use of our time and money, and again, this is the only decision, Tim, that's been made, is interim.
Is to defer the decision.
Is to, we need to defer the selection process, otherwise
So, you know.
If we spend that money in the assessment center, then as far as I'm concerned, we have decided that we are gonna stay with civil ser- service. And the problem, I don't know that I can do that in good conscience, because enough doubt, I've had enough concerns brought to me that I think it's worth putting to the town, which means we wait.
And you have concerns over the cost of deferment. Not monetarily, but whatever impact it has on the department and the ability to.
I think it says you can't change it temporarily.
I might.
I, I have confidence in the civil service.
If it doesn't work out.
If the.
So you'd rather see us go and just get the list now, and you work through it?
And work through it.
The worst that happens is that, you know, that Lieutenant Emrick grossly mismanages the department, at which point in time, I appoint someone else.
And who's gonna do that?
As the interim.
You?
Appoint an interim, it would be an interim, it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the D-chief, it would be an interim, until we can go through the selection process.
And it doesn't matter, the, the, the decision of appointing a police chief
Right there.
Evolves to the town manager.
Right, by, by the charter.
And we could hire somebody through civil service who grossly mismanages, and all that means is that we'd have a harder time getting rid of that person than we would if we hired somebody outside of civil service, so I don't it's not an easy case. What do you, what have you heard? Anything?
The thing I heard is that there were problems in the department.
Right. For civil service, do you, do you agree that this is a question, with my assessment, that this is a question that should go before the town?
I think it, it should go to the town, and I feel the town would grab it.
And I feel you're wrong, so let's put it to the test, and, and put it on the, on the ballot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's my report, that's right.
Why wait?
You could do that in November, what's that, you could do that in November?
No, 'cause nineteen fifty-four, the ballot.
That's right, it's a ballot.
You can have ballots in November, only in May, that's, that's what Howard was reading.
I don't think it was put in by ballot, it was a town vote though, wasn't it?
That, it was ballot.
It was ballot.
That's actually technically the only way it can be put in, I found a Warren article in Wareham, and Wareham got rid of civil service via Warren article, by a town meeting vote. It turns out Wareham adopted civil service by a ballot, that's what MGL calls for, it's supposed to be adopted by ballot, so Wareham got rid of it, but technically, they're they're dissolved, they're getting rid of civil service was, if anybody called them on it, would be invalid, because it was in contravention of the law, but it's already been done.
Any of the complaints against the police, have they been looked through and thoroughly investigated, have decisions been made on them?
It depend, yeah, well, I've talked to the board in the past earlier this year.
Excluding him.
The only person I've gotten any complaints from is Mike Burrow.
And how long has the complaint been going on, two thousand eight?
And you know what, his complaints pretty much revolve around one person. And that person will no longer be working for the town of Oxbridge in eleven days.
That, it should have never come about.
If the dating fact came about, unfortunately, I can't find any evidence.
I, I'd like to see some records from Mr. Sluzik, when he was handling these problems, I'd like to see what he did.
I wa- I was on the board.
I can tell you.
These things came, came to the fore, and I looked at all the materials that, that Mr. Burrow submitted and so forth, and we're all on this letter, in which Casey said the chief, you know, said things that were wrong, and it's not true. The chief stated, sent a letter to the Registry of Motor Vehicles saying that the, the organization, I forgot the name of it, has no official connection with the town of Oxbridge, which is true. And that's a requirement for utilizing those
Lights.
Lights, you know, in emergency vehicles.
And plates, and plates.
Um, everything else has to do with some third party, um, state trooper or, or something, or some other policeman, it has nothing to do with, with the main issue, you know, the fact.
There was an investigation already done by
State police.
Who was in there, Pitt, Beth Pittman and somebody else, there was a, the, the board was involved in that in some, some way, I don't know if you remember it. In some way with that.
You were.
I was on the board.
Maybe you went, maybe you went.
During that initial period.
Were all the complainants in the same room?
Only one complaint, one person had a complaint. Part of these allegations were of threats made online, there were no threats, the fact that somebody writes something bad about you isn't a threat. And of course, the problem is it's online, it's on the orange board, which was anonymous.
That, and they took that off. Why, 'cause it, was it a threat to somebody?
No, but the, a private citizen controlled it, the police, not the police department's orange board, it was a private citizen. We don't, I don't know who the webmaster was, but no, actually, I, I read the orange board, it's up there, it's still online, you can dig around, Google it, find it, it's there.
I didn't think it was online.
A couple of suggestive remarks were made there about his, the level of his sanity, but other than that, nobody threatened him, no one said, I'm gonna go and do something to this person. Not even close, nothing led, rose to the level of a threat. And I have given every citizen who has come in with a complaint, his or her due, and I listen, and I investigate, I gather as much evidence as is avail- available to me. One thing I cannot investigate, however, is um collusion, destruction of evidence, uh, you know, those are, those are criminal charges, we are not equipped or in, not as in my jurisdiction to handle those things.
Really to the district attorney's office.
And he's been, and he's been advised that by me, by the police chief, by the lieutenant, repeatedly, since I started this job.
Bring that up also, to the DA.
I've been, it was requ- he requested that I maybe hand this off to the DA, I said, well, why hasn't he handed it off to the DA, said, well, the DA won't listen to me. It's not my, it's not Oxbridge's problem, it's a, it's a private residence problem, I don't know.
But it's a criminal problem. See, you see, the Oxbridge police are very selective as to what things that they look into. And if they don't want the results.
Well, they're not gonna look into themselves, clearly, that's why, and I'd be the first one to say, if you investigate, I, if you look back over my emails, I said, the only way you may get satisfaction here is if you have someone independent, which means a court, a judge, someone who has no connection with this town, who can subpoena records, who has no horse in this race, because then there's not gonna be the taint of any sort of nepotism, or cronyism, or any of that kinda stuff, and yet, he, this particular individual has not taken advantage of that. And that, there's a reason for it. As an attorney, I've looked at it as a town manager, and I've looked at it as an attorney, if I was an attorney, if I were an attorney, I wouldn't take the complaint, personally, wouldn't file it.
But he has the opportunity to do so himself.
And absolutely, and I've done everything I can to assist.
Done something to resolve some of the, some of the friction that has been going on also. And he chose not to, he said, go get a lawyer and take me to court.
So, other than that, I haven't heard a lot about, I haven't heard, I haven't had any complaints directly about the police department. There have been some questions here and there.
About the police department.
To me, I'm sure, I'm sure pe- people would, and again, if, if it was bad enough, I believe it would. And that's why I told the, the resident that we've been speaking of, I'd be the first in line, you show me, I said, I'm not gonna make your case for you, because I don't have the evidence. But he makes the case, he gets somebody to, he hands me a conviction that says that somebody in the town, on the employee of this town, is doing something illegal, I'll be the first in line to throw down terminations, or uh, reprimands, or whatever is required, I'll be first in line, 'cause guess what, I don't need that crap in this town either, any more than anybody else does. So, but I can't, it's not my job, it's, I don't have the time or the inclination, or nor should I make someone else's case for them.
I don't expect you to do that, and if it doesn't make sense to you, when he's in a room, and all the other parties that are involved are in the same room, so they can all be heard together, not one here and one there, and, and not It was never done like that.
But when, when do you?
It was never done like that, it was separated.
How do you qualify?
What do you mean, why separate them?
It was separated, I was on the board then.
Comes in the door, you all of a sudden pull everyone off the task, and you get it?
That's what we're talking about.
That must have been going on for five years, right now.
But someone has to qualify it, and it's been through multiple qualification letters, levels with multiple town managers now.
So you guys had a hearing?
It was separated.
And who came to the hearing? Police chief, Mike Burrow, police superintendent. Uh, the other, Wendy White. And there was one other guy that was a private investigator, he works for Northbridge, is the dog officer, Chauvin. Oh yeah, Chauvin, yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
And it wasn't all together.
Mr. Burrow would love to have a hearing, and you know what, the problem is, he wants to bring his attorney. I know the police officers will not testify, will not say anything without their att- without the union's attorney with him, guess what, this isn't court. I'm not gonna, you can't, we can't have a hearing, because nothing, nobody would say anything, I mean, the vice of counsel.
The court is that you're not obligated to follow the rules of the court, hearings are run by the chair. And you know, you can't speak when you're not, when you uh, out of line, or you just can't run it. We've had hearings upstairs in the Board of Health, and they start telling us what we're doing, and you gallop them down and say, look, this is the way we're gonna do it.
But part of my problem is, I know some of the people, and this is for, to Mr. Burrow's benefit as well, some of the people he calls upon who, to say, who he says would verify his story, are police officers who will not talk unless their attorney's present.
Oh, that's true.
And their attorneys can be present, however, this is not the proper venue for doing it, to resolve those.
Should have never got.
All the parties, and then their attorneys, well gee, there is a place built, exactly to hear that. It's called the courthouse.
Which is exactly, this isn't a case of not being interested in fixing the problem, it's just, we've done what we can, and we have advised Mr. Burrow the next step that he needs to take in order to get some satisfaction, and he hasn't taken it. I wish he would. I wanna see it go away too, I wanna see it resolved, however it is.
Resolve too. Uh, but.
I feel badly, you know, he wasn't.
It was taken up by the board, but you had the minutes on that meeting? I've seen them, they aren't, they aren't very good.
It was televised, right?
Uh, not all of it.
No?
No, some of it went into executive session.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember, that was a while ago.
And that's where the meeting minutes are not good.
Well, you see, if it were in a courthouse, there's a stenographer that takes accurate, verbatim transcript.
Right.
We've got a lot of common ground tonight, this is a, I like what this is.
You guys are building the bridge here.
Anyways, that's, that, that concludes my report.
Okay, what I don't understand is we have a problem with the conservation commission, okay, so the solution to that problem is to hire somebody to do the work. We had a problem, I remember with Mike Sluzik, was saying, well, you know, Peter, I asked him about why you hired a lieutenant. He said, well, you know, the chief isn't too strong on personnel skills, I said, yes. The solution, my solution would be, help him get the skills, or fire him.
There you go.
His solution is, or hire a lieutenant. I don't understand that much.
Difference between professional helping, professional training, someone that, either someone they should know, or can get access to, and be able to make them do that, and a volunteer board.
We had a professional conservation agent, you remember? Yes, enough said.
But, why would you invite an entire group of people based on our experiences with one person?
We had two town planners, remember? How's that work out for you?
Backwards, and they complained.
Peter, for one thing, I, I agree with.
Hundred percent accurate.
If this doesn't work out, this isn't a union position, this is a, basically a contract position, it's an exempt employee, so, if this doesn't work out, we can stop this, alright, but the, the fact of the matter is, is the board is deficient, 'cause it's only got five people. It needs, it's supposed to have seven, they're operating under five, four, lots of times. It, it, they have, so they have small, short on numbers, they have difficulty conducting site visits. They have difficulty sometimes directing their decisions, in terms of making it understandable to the resident, in terms of uh, referencing the particular law that they're referring to, and this is where this particular, these are two specific areas people are gonna help.
Problems won't go away, because you've hired somebody else.
This person is going to advise that group, and this wasn't just someone to do the work, it's to, was very specific in my interviewing, and in the person that I ultimately hired, was this person is taking an advisory and a training role, this person isn't, I don't want someone who can operate, I agree with you, who's gonna be autonomous, and say, here's what you do, board, I don't want that either. Ultimately, I want the board to learn something and grow along the way, that's the plan.
Because.
You, you can do that if this is a normal required level, and the board's here, you can have somebody can help them, pull them up. But if this is the required operating level, and the board is here, then you're doomed.
Look, it's a volunteer board, how can I make requirements of volunteers?
I, I know that.
Because I work with one of these conservation people, and they not only do their job, and they do it well, but they also set up what the, what the recommendation is, and it won't be two feet here and five feet here. So it'll be consistent with the entire prob- problem.
Our board's great too, those guy, those people are great, I appreciate the work that they do, they need some. Our board's great too, those guy, those people are great, I appreciate the work that they do, they need some help.
Yep. You're right. Another thing is, you can't have one person looking over Pawpont, it's gotta be the whole board. That's a whole board's job.
Right, that's definitely one of the conservationists.
That's an area, to speak to training or whatever, that I have been working with Chairman Russ Holden. He and I have had some discussions about steps he can take as the leader, if you will, as the chair of that. And that's, those are areas that I can help, you know, advise or train him and help him grow as a chairman, chairperson. But I think subject matter knowledge, I think if we have at least someone who's working with the commission, who has the knowledge and is willing to pass it along.
Time will tell.
Time, ex- I agree.
Time will tell.
Why can't they get to sites? They just.
Everybody has work and jobs, and they try to get more than one person there, and.
It just seems to be a problem.
So why do people take a position if they're not willing to do the work?
I think they, they can when they can.
Well.
That's how, how these things extend and extend and extend.
Okay, so everybody quits, we end up with a conservation commission, then what happened? What, what would the town do if there were no commission?
We'd get sued for the first time, somebody did something wrong.
No, in all ser- I know, it sounds, but in all seriousness, what would we do? I'd, we'd have to, what, farm our stuff out to another town?
No, 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 you, you find some people that, first, we should have, we shouldn't have seven people, that's too many.
It's recommended by the state conservation commission.
I was in the charter commission, when we discussed these things, and we had the conservation commission come in. And they said, well, we think it should be five members, five is the ideal number. And then a week later, they came in and said, oh, we, we think it should be seven, seven's the right number. And the reason, the right number changed from five to seven, is because they had two people they wanted on the commission. You see, so the reason given for something is almost never based on some underlying principle, it's based on the needs of the moment.
And one of the problems with those site visits is, yeah, I know it's a volunteer board, but if they don't get there, two weeks go by, a month go by, a month and a half goes by, and these people that need to get
help.
Done, cause they're building a house or doing something.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one of the things, if you take that board, you know you're gonna do site visits. I mean, the old board used to do it on Saturday mornings.
It should be, you know, in, in the case of a building inspector, plumbing inspector, electrical inspector, you call and say, I'm ready for inspection, they have twenty-four hours.
Four hours, right.
To get out there. And, you know, if not, fine, you cover it up, that's it, they had their chance, and that should be how the conservation commission works.
That's one of the. It's seven members by the charter, right, so I guess we have to get a recommendation at the hearing. To ch- knock it down to five.
Oh, I gotta fix it tonight.
That skunk came to visit us.
Shut up, air conditioner. Motion to adjourn.
What's the curfew, ten o'clock or eleven?
About a ten.
Almost ten.
Is there any member issues?
Yeah, can I just, a couple of quick things, just to update, uh, for those that went to the sewer department, the DEP, uh, is about to issue the public notice on the permit. And unfortunately, things didn't go well in Upper Blackstone, so those limits will probably be the same as what we're discussing today.
Wow.
Um, they got a couple of things in our, our favor for a longer extension period, but, uh, expect to hear something from Ben and, and those guys in the next couple of weeks on the formal release of the, uh, permit, so.
So that upper Blackstone.
Yeah, they lost us enough. No, no, they, they tried to get it reduced, and, uh, basically it was based on some, some cost elements, and then they were bringing up some other, uh, means why they wanted to get it reduced, but what had happened, and it will be issued.
Reduced, meaning?
The level, certain levels, certain levels. They were denied that at the Supreme Court level, on the, uh, the basis that they didn't bring up those initial concerns.
Yeah.
When they had their public hearing, so it's very important, and I, and, you know.
They're searching for other grounds for appeal, there's been a lot of articles in the paper that really, the city council is really pushing.
Yeah.
The se- cause my, my water bill's gonna go up two hundred and fifty bucks or whatever, right, so.
But, so expect to hear some more in the next couple of weeks on that.
All right.
The only other thing I, I had, um, one of the things Pete and I talked about the other day was trying to get a handle on what are all these commissions and committees doing, I think you guys are going through the process of getting the names up on the website, and what's active, what's not. One of the things that we're gonna do is send out a letter to the chair, asking them, um, over the next couple of months to come into one of our meetings with a timeline of fifteen minutes, just tell us what you're, you're, you're up to and what you're doing. And one will give them PR if they need members that they can, you know, actively recruit, and we can spend a few minutes just to, to see, you know, what's really going on, where, and where do we need to apply some, some help.
In the short term, if you have any questions, you can ask me, I mean, I go, I routinely go with some regularity too. I mean, I go to all the FINCOM meetings, but I go to planning board even now and again, I went to conservation in the last meeting it had, so I do attend.
A lot of boards and committees on there that don't even exist anymore.
Doesn't exist, right, so we're just trying to kinda, yeah, pursue them.
Historic district I've been to.
And a lot, just a last note, um, on, on, related to Pawpont, is there smoking allowed on public property? Cause I got some complaints from people that there's a lot of smoking down at Pawpont. Said it's a beautiful, a beautiful site, and it's a great thing, but.
There's no blanket prohibition.
No, you're not, it's.
As I know.
There is, you're not supposed to be smoking on public property.
Smoke outside, yeah, the smoke, the smoking regulations in Massachusetts pretty much revolve around indoors or outdoors.
You can't even smoke in a public vehicle. If, if you got a town employee driving a town truck.
Nope.
No smoking in that truck.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, but that's our, that's our rule, it's not a blanket, any public property.
No, it's a state, it's a state law, so it applies to Pawpont.
But not outside.
For our employees.
No, because our employee can, can stand, every state facility has a designated smoking area.
No, no, they're doing away with them.
No, they have them, they want to get rid of them, but there, there's no, New York City recently got rid of it, but our state doesn't.
They stopped smoking in our, in the Massachusetts Department of Correction, and we can't stop smoking in here?
They can't smoke inside, but they can't, yeah.
Outside property.
They can't even be near the doorway.
Yeah, so that was just a, a couple of complaints I.
Yeah, unfortunately, they can smoke outside.
And I gotta complain about the trash, yeah, too, Jay, along, along that line. There's been a lot of people this summer, so I guess, uh. They can't go down there four or five times a day.
I know, that's the problem. He, Dave wants, you know what I told David, he said, you need to get a dumpster in a private company, that's gonna be that awful, cause the DPW can't.
DPW won't do it. There's only two trashcans down there.
They can't.
There's not enough, it's too small. They got, they're charging a fee, tell them they need to get a dumpster. I've got a dumpster over there. Because they, those they empty when you call them. It's full, and then empty it. You'll find everything in there. It don't have to be that big, a three yata. Three yata? Yeah. Cause everybody comes down when they, uh, when they, when they can access.
Yeah, sure, it's our stuff.
Your rabbit animals.
The couches next to it, and TVs next to it.
Police will send them down, yeah.
You got someone down there watching, put a lock on it.
I, I predict that the board's gonna do nothing about the budget and nothing about the bylaws. That's my prediction.
All right, we'll see what happens.
Well, it's always next year.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, if you want a favor.
Aye.